Andre, go ahead, Andre.
Okay, is the mic working? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so thanks for giving me the opportunity to say a few things or comments today. As you probably all know, the governor stated today that he can't imagine a reason not to go back to school in low-risk areas. And I would count Manchester as one such low area. According to that map, we're in the white zone ahead of Beverly. And I can only hope that you take those words into consideration, that this is not a done deal yet, the hybrid model or the fully remote. The remote learning in the spring was a disaster from our perspective, especially for the youngest one. And I can't see how that would be much different in the fall. Beverly, on the other hand, apparently just announced that they would send all K through 4th graders five days a week to back to school, at least in the mornings, and then a shorter afternoon session. That's something we could live with. We can't do like the two day in, three days off thing. I don't know what happened to that one week off, one week on option. It just seems to have disappeared unless I missed something. The other thing is that our kids have been going to the YMCA summer camps for the past six weeks. There's over 100 kids every day, about a dozen counselors. They group them in small pods that separate from the other pods, but within the group, they are basically on top of each other. They wear masks and everything, but with those basic safety considerations in place, there have been zero cases of infections. So if they can do it, I think we could have had a summer playground. I think we can have an after-school program in the fall. And I think our, at least younger kids, can go back to school. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I was talking with my mic on. Thank you for your comments. Caroline, you're up next.
Hi. School committee members, whoever thought that you would be confronted with something harder than passing an override or building a new elementary school, well, here you are. I appreciate the path that the administration has been on following state guidance, what little there has been, but ask that you take a vote this evening as to what model you'd begin with this fall. The reason I feel this is the time to do so is so that teachers, families, and the administration can spend the next month fine-tuning the best educational experience for all by September 16th. The clock is ticking. The past two school committee meetings have been very insightful, and the models have been clearly presented at each of the meetings with critical detail. While I look forward to hearing the elementary school presentations this evening, it has become very clear that the best path is to make the return to school in school learning on a phased approach. The first phase this fall should be all remote, as many of the other districts in the state have decided. Spending close to $2 million from reserve funds to get the kids back into the buildings seems an investment that isn't in the best interest of the students or the financial health of the district. I've heard many parents on these calls asking that the community and parents come together to assist the district in getting the students in the buildings. I suggest that the same energy be focused on making remote learning worth for all grade levels. As parents, as a parent who is familiar, I'm trying to get it in in my three minutes. As a parent who is familiar with our district, I can't imagine asking our teachers to manage students and teach under the guidance that has, that we must follow to protect student and faculty health. I have great confidence in the administrative team and the teachers to provide a remote learning environment that holds children, teachers, and families accountable and produces the best educational outcomes. This remote model, in my opinion, should allow for teachers to be in the building classrooms in a safe manner. The teachers will be able to assess the teaching tools and technology the district has to offer while allowing a safe environment for children to meet in person, such as small instructional groups, science classes with lab components, and students with special educational needs. I'll ask the committee members to remember the mission statement in the MRSC policy manual, and I quote, "The school committee therefore affirms and declares its intent to establish policies and make decisions on the basis of the declared educational philosophy and goals. All decisions made by the committee will be made with priority given to the proposed set forth, most crucial of which is the optimal learning of the children enrolled in our schools." Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And there's one in the chat from Sophia who's asking me to read it out loud, so I will read from Sophia Johansson. "Thank you for, thank you all for your work. We, as the members of your community, have a responsibility to respect and support the decision that this group of dedicated volunteers and staff and leaders in our school district will make. I, along with many others, trust that you will make the best decision that you can, given these unique circumstances." Okay, so that's from Sophia. There's no one else in the chat. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Okay, hearing, oh. Caroline neglected to say that she's a parent and former school committee member. Thank you, Caroline. All right, so hearing no more public comment, we are going to turn off the chat. We're up to 142 participants and we're allowed up to 200, so that looks pretty good. And I will jump right in with my chairman's report for August 11th. So welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight. All 100 and, what did I just say, 45 of you. Thank you to 1623 Studios for recording the meeting and posting it for us. Tonight, before we dig into reopening, I would like to recognize some amazing volunteers from Essex. Thank you to Dan Mayer, Tyler Verden, and Bill and Carol Mandello, along with their crew of about 30 volunteers who organized the demolition of the old Eagles Nest, bringing us one step closer to a new playground. So yay, we couldn't do it without our community support. Before we move on to the rest of tonight's meeting, I do want to remind everyone that we are all in this exhausting extended crisis situation together. The district, the school committee, our families, and the greater community all need to continue to work collaboratively to find solutions to best meet the needs of all of our students. We continue to hear from you regularly, and we value your input. Please continue to keep an open mind as you listen to the comments and questions of your neighbors. We don't know a lot about what this fall will hold, but one thing we do know is that we have, we will all have to remain flexible, open to new ideas, and supportive of each other as we move into September and throughout the school year. So that's my report. Welcome, everybody. It is, I don't believe we have a student report with us for the summer. Don't think Lucas is here. So we are going to move on with the consent agenda, which is just the minutes from August 4th. So do I have a motion to consent agenda?
So moved, Erdman.
Any discussion?
I didn't get those. What package were they? Were they in that Friday or?
What email were they in?
I do not remember, but if you haven't had them, perhaps we could just delay the approval of those minutes for one more week. We do have another meeting next week.
Yeah, I mean, or I can abstain. It's just, I had not, I did not read them, so I apologize.
That's okay.
I don't know that, I'm sorry, I don't know that I put them in the packet. I think I just sent a quick note and then slides on Monday, so that's my fault. I'm sorry.
Right, that's my bad. Until next week. Yeah, we will revisit. All right, so no consent agenda items, but we do have a report from the policy committee. Do I have Teresa or Eric or Matt?
So we did not meet again. This is Eric, but I think we're going to wait to see where we're going before we finalize the masking and the transportation policy.
Great. All right, and I do not believe we have any other subcommittee reports unless I'm missing something.
No, we have, we have a building committee meeting on Thursday, and Shannon, I am going to send you those invites.
Thank you.
Right now, okay?
Thank you. Awesome. All right, so moving on, I guess I'm turning it over to you, Pam, for continued business.
Let's just dig in. So basically, the only topic on the agenda tonight is talking about closing in on a decision for opening school in the fall. So what we're going to hear about tonight, first, I'm going to start with a quick reminder that school starts with students on September 16th. I'll include that in as many notices that we put out from now until the beginning of the year, and we are working on the, excuse me, revised calendar that will also be going out. We'll start with a few conclusions to date as we dig into the process and develop protocols, try to model things out. We learn a little bit more every week, so not a whole lot in addition to last report, but a few interesting items that are important to share. Then the bulk of the evening we'll spend on looking at the hybrid model and how it would be implemented at the elementary and the impacts it may have on that program. A look at the schedule and some safety protocols that will need to be in place. Allison Collins is here to give a special ed planning update. They have been, she has been part, and her team has been part of all of our program development so far, and she will kind of, I think she, like many of us, will have a lot more work to do once we land on a plan because she'll have to customize the offering to whatever model we land on, but she will bring you up to speed on where they're at. And then we can talk a little bit about next steps timeline and maybe some structures for decision-making. So I'm not going to go through all of the points that I updated you on last week. I have, I do have them here, so when we post the documents, they will be available again off the top, but essentially what we're finding is that with the six-foot social distancing, we immediately had to rule out full in-person. From there, we have really dug deep into the hybrid and what it would look like. And while I know our process may be a little longer than people had wanted, I think the benefit of what we're doing is we're not just picking something that we think will work from a 30,000-foot view, but the principals and the directors have really dug in to see what daily application of the model would look like. And that just allows us to unearth some operational issues that can be resolved, but should also be brought to people's attention because I think they do have an impact on how people will perceive the effectiveness of the model. So I think one of the things we're learning right out of the gate is that staffing is a critical component to making the hybrid successful. Where there's also a significant amount of facilities investment and increased staffing for maintenance of facilities. Well, we can take a look at the budget before we close tonight, but the, the range for some type of in-person learning is still between about $1 million and a half to $2 million. Other, we went through in detail last week, kind of the implications for the secondary. Basically, what we're learning in every instance is it's going to come down for this group. I think Caroline's comments and I think of Jake's comments last week, what's the goal we're trying to achieve? And in building the hybrid, the goal you're trying to achieve is to bring as many students back as possible. That was the goal of in-person learning. What we're finding is to achieve the goal of bringing kids back on campus, there seems to have to be a trade-off with some of the program offering or the instructional delivery model. So that's what we talked about at great length last week, which is, what is the implication to the middle high school program if we are able, if we focus on bringing kids back in a safe way? And what we, what we identified was, the program as we know it can't be delivered while implementing all of the, the health and safety guidelines we would need to, to have kids safely be on campus every day. We also know from the surveys, and I will pull up the data at some point. Parents have a very strong interest in bringing kids back to school. We were averaging around 85% to 90% in some cases of parents willing to come back and try the hybrid. But we did find that the program for many, and even in the communications that we've received post-meeting from last week, have really emphasized the importance of being able to access the full course load at the middle high school. So program is, is as important in some cases as the interest in getting the kids back in school. I think that'll be an interesting part of our conversation tonight because it may play out a little differently at the elementary. So getting into some of the newer conclusions. The hybrid model is really going to require community buy-in to maintain the cohort integrity and social distancing and masking-wearing measures in and out of school. So the whole, there've been a couple of great articles we retweeted this week about what we're really trying to achieve in building these cohorts, and the concept is a smaller version of the MBA bubble, if you will. The idea that you keep a small group together and interacting kind of in their own makeshift bubble, which is going to require parents to buy into maintaining friendship groups and play dates among kids in the cohort and really adhering tightly to social distancing and mask-wearing measures when they're not in school and supporting us when they're in school. So hybrid success is going to have to be a community effort. The hybrid schedule that's emerging is the two days in and three days home. We did have some data to support that in the return-to-school survey, so I will pull that out to show you where we're getting this. Also, there's probably a few different variations on it in the North Shore. I would recommend to the committee that Monday be the remote day with Tuesday, Wednesday being green and Tuesday, Thursday, Friday being white, mainly to maintain balance between the number of days of instruction between the cohorts. There are, I forgot the number off the top of my head, but there are more Monday missed days than there are any other day of the week. So anybody who had Monday in their cohort schedule would be receiving less days of instruction. But happy to go back and pull the data on that. And this is the one that I think operationally troubles me the most because with everything we could promise with the hybrid in terms of returning kids to school, I do think the hybrid is the most vulnerable to staffing shortages and rolling shutdowns. And a brief explanation of that is, I'm projecting up to 20% of staff will access leave options. I believe I have a raw count of 21 individuals right now who have sought information or put in a formal request for leave next year if we're returning to the building. I'm uncertain if we're going to be able to fill all of those positions, so I'm just not, I can't say with 100% confidence that we will be able to have a full staff to run the model. We will need a full staff in each building to run the model. I'm not saying it can't be done. I just feel I have to be open and honest and say it will be a heavy lift to find. If we realize all of those leaves, it will be a pretty heavy lift to find enough people to fill those positions. And if we are still looking at it critically at the secondary level, in addition to leave replacements, we're going to need just straight additional staffing. I think we have it at two and a half, two and a half staff members to support the middle school. So because we're reliant on full staffing, schools, we've run some modeling can basically tolerate two absent classroom teachers before risking a shutdown, meaning we could provide with our current level of staffing coverage for classes when we have up to two teachers out. We can't, we will do what we always do, try to recruit a deep substitute pool. That has not been easy to do over the past few years in full disclosure. And we will always reorganize the building as much as possible to cover those classrooms. That's where we get into the first comment, which is, in maintaining cohort integrity, you're trying to not mix and match adults and children too much during the day. So we would certainly be, you know, having to move a little bit outside the rules to assign people to cover classes in the event that we have a quarantine. And I think what I spent some time this week doing is going a little more in-depth through the COVID response language. And I think this is something that we will all have to, to deal with in some way. Bottom line is, if a student is found positive or forced to quarantine, all close contacts are going to have to do the same. And in the guidance, close contacts are defined as any student and staff within six feet of the student for at least 10 to 15 minutes. So essentially, that will be anyone in the student's cohort. If we go to the 60-student cohorts at the middle and high school, you can imagine the number of students who may potentially have to quarantine and the number of teachers that may potentially have to quarantine out. So we're basically running the risk that one sick child could lead us or sick adult could lead us to a shutdown. So my concern would be, just to disclose that with the hybrid, we have that potential of opening and shutting and opening and shutting based, based primarily on our ability to staff and run the buildings and sustain extensive quarantines.
Can I have a quick question?
Sure.
What is the cost, when someone goes on leave, what's the cost of the salary?
Is it? Sure.
And can you also tell me what is the cost of a substitute for a day?
Sure. So if somebody puts in, let's, let's just take a typical Family Medical Leave Act, and now there's a rider to the Family Medical Leave Act, which accounts for childcare needs if someone's school or childcare facility is shut down. So if another school goes remote or another school has a hybrid schedule in which they may be closed down for a few days a week and the children are at home, our, our teachers will be in the same position as the, as the members of our community. They're going to have to be providing healthcare. To answer your question, I believe it's about $15,000, I'm rounding, for a long-term sub to cover a 12-week leave. And a 12-week leave is what everyone is entitled to under FMLA if they meet certain conditions. So you'd be paying full salary and benefits to the individual on leave plus approximately $15,000 for someone to cover it. If, on my budget estimate, you'll see I'm carrying about $300,000 for replacement leaves using that target of 20% staff. That doesn't account for day subs. That would be in its own separate bucket.
Is that accounted for on that, on that budget or no?
No, we carry a pretty healthy sub-line each year, so we're going to rely on that right now because I don't, I don't even know a metric I would use to estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So again, my point in this is hybrid is absolutely doable on paper, but this is something we'll all have to, to live with. I think there's a sense of unpredictability in the schedule, which I think one of the goals of trying to bring the students in is to return to a predictable routine in an ongoing schedule, and this could have, this has the potential to have more fits and starts. I mean, that's on one side. On the other, we could have absolutely no cases. I think a gentleman mentioned earlier that there haven't really been many local cases. But the bringing together of people from multiple communities throughout the region may have some impact on how we weather that storm. So we're vulnerable to staffing shortages and shutdowns. Childcare is going to present as an issue for everyone, regardless of whether in a hybrid or remote. I think we've come to that conclusion. Through our surveys, about 25 to 30% of the families reported that they may not have an adequate availability to healthcare. And we are, please know, we're actively discussing childcare options with community partners, one that was mentioned earlier, which was the YMCA. So we are fully aware, whichever model we land on, we will certainly need to provide some type of support, at least in terms of where resources or where to go if we're not able to put something together onsite. Then just finally, I think remote program delivery doesn't negate in-person learning opportunities. And this was kind of a conclusion drawn after the discussion we had at length last week about the model implications at the middle high school. High-need students and students with disabilities will be prioritized for in-person learning. So even if we're doing our core program in a remote model, we will certainly still be looking at specialized programs for on-campus access. And then all of the models will have, obviously, hybrid has in-person as an ongoing component, but in remote, there's ongoing discussion and, and really a desire to prioritize opportunities for in-person community building, at least to begin, at the beginning of the year, where we could leverage outdoor space and perhaps create some smaller group opportunities to come in, meet your teacher, maybe meet some other students in your class, so that when you are on an online platform, you already have some sense of who those people are. So we're going to be talking a little bit more about how to utilize outdoor space. And then I feel like we have some problems that just don't have current solutions. It doesn't mean that we're not going to work our way through them and find something creative. But something that continues to be raised by different groups is just the testing and tracing capacity of both towns and the state as a whole. We're not going to have quick answers and turnaround, so I could see it being a little chaotic in terms of trying to track down contacts if someone is suspected or tests positive. And then just the pressure we're going to put on both towns. I think last week we talked about Manchester having 10 hours of Department of Health nursing services dedicated to contract tracing. I know they have a full-time person in Essex. Both people have been tremendous help in putting this together. But I think we have a general concern that there may just not be enough person power to, to run the level of service we're going to need. The interconnectedness of the region, this came up in a couple of calls that I was on today. I think some of the school committee members may have been on it too, which is our school is not a school of just Manchester and Essex. It's a school that serves children from all over Cape Ann through school choice. And our faculty and staff come from Boston, Revere, Chelsea, up to New Hampshire and out toward Haverhill and Lawrence and everywhere in between. So when we bring everybody back on campus, we are not just talking about an isolated area. I think we just need to be prepared for that. It ties back to the testing and tracing capacity. Most of the testing and tracing are done through the local boards of health, which means there needs to be an interconnectedness and a shared responsibility among all of those departments for timely informing and timely information sharing. So I, again, it's not a problem that doesn't have a solution. It's one we just haven't quite figured out yet. But I think it'll be important to do so to kind of ensure there's some efficiency in our ability to, to notify people if we do have an identification and just kind of put our COVID response process into action. I'm going to probably keep saying it over and over again, availability of staffing. Until I know for certain what we need to hire, and if there are people out there, I won't be able to, to let you know what that looks like, but I think that's going to be a heavy lift. And then one thing I'm personally struggling with in full disclosure is the consistency of state messaging and guidance. I heard the governor's comments today about us being in school. I'm also hearing him say that we shouldn't be having gatherings over 25, and schools are exempt from that. So on one hand, it's okay to put 250 to 400 kids in one building, but yet you have to wear masks when you're 25 people and someone's home. So it's apples and oranges, I get that. It's not making our messaging any easier or our ability to convince people of their own personal safety or their children's safety. So there seems to be a lot of mixed messaging coming out of the state. I know we're going to get some metric data today or tomorrow that will help us with some decision-making. So from a level of personal frustration, things have been a little bit behind when we need them to make decisions and not always, one set of guidance is not always syncing up with another set of guidance. So I think that's just another problem we're going to have to continue to try to work through. So that's what we've learned in the week that we've had since our last meeting. And I know tonight we want to really dig into the elementary hybrid model. So if there aren't any questions on just the overview, we can throw it over to Jennifer Roberts and John Willis, and they're going to talk you through what this might look like at the elementary school. All set with that, Sarah?
Yeah, thank you, Pam.
Welcome.
First of all, if your name, if your name on your computer is Ms. Mac, can you please make sure that you're muted? We keep getting interference from your account. That would be awesome.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's just an accident. Is there anybody from the school committee who has any questions or comments for Pam?
Hi, I just have a quickie. And, and I don't know if, of course I do. I don't know if you want to answer this now, Pam, or, or Sarah, if you want me to wait until later. But I wondered if you could speak a little bit to the first bullet on this slide, which is remote, remote program delivery does not negate in-person learning opportunities. And I didn't know if you wanted to speak a little bit to like, what, what does that mean or what does that look like? Because I think there have been some really interesting and creative ways of talking about how we can still have kids see their teachers and.
I would love to.
I don't know if you want to talk about that now or not.
I know Joanne and Tricia are on the call, and they've done some, some thinking beyond, you know, since our meeting last week after getting a lot of feedback. So I'd like to be able to go through what it looks like at the elementary, and then we can kind of talk about what, what some of this might mean in action, because I do have a few more things to run you through.
Perfect. And I love your disclaimer at the bottom. I'm buying you the T-shirt.
Can I have one too? May I ask a quick question before we move on? Pam, can you clarify something you said? I might have written this down improperly. Two absent teachers kind of went into a shutdown. Can you clarify that and explain it?
Sure, so if we had two people who had to call in sick, so we're going to be encouraging people, if you have symptoms, if you're not feeling well, you know, you want to make sure you stay home. So whether somebody's staying home because of symptoms or someone's been told to quarantine, if we have two classroom teachers absent, we aren't necessarily going to have a teacher to put into that classroom. So we may have to either tell that group not to come to school that day, because typically you may put a bunch of children together in one location, not best practice, but all the time, especially with the younger ones. But you can, you can have some workarounds. But we may not have enough staff to cover two, we can probably do two cohorts together to get to 25 students, but once you get beyond that. We can probably do two cohorts together to get to twenty-five students, but once you get beyond that, we're just not going to have enough personnel to do all of the coverage and supervision and provide the ongoing teaching and program. Jen and John may be able to explain that in a little bit more detail, because I know they deal with that issue now on an, you know, on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Guys, I'm happy to drive for you.
Thank you.
Hey, great. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everybody here. I think we're, for a minute there, we were over two hundred viewers, so that's that's great.
I'm hoping it's two fifty.
Yeah, I think it might be. It definitely ticked over to two for a bit. So I just actually wanted to start off by just acknowledging that none of this is easy for, for any of us, whether you're a teacher, a parent, administrator, a member of the school committee, a taxpayer. This, this is not an easy situation for any of us, and I think Caroline earlier mentioned some of the most challenging times that we've been through, and that list goes on and on. And this, this definitely is, is kind of all of that times ten. So it's important that we all kind of take a deep breath and, you know, realize that, you know, we're all here for the kids and we want to come up with the best solution for the kids. John and I and the rest of the administrative team have been working for hundreds or thousands of hours trying to come up with, you know, some plans that everybody's going to love. And it's, it's, it's near impossible. So we, we're here tonight to kind of give you the overview of, of, of what we've come up with and answer any questions that you may have. And, you know, we may not figure it all out tonight, but we will, we will definitely figure it out. I've had a number of staff members reach out to me and say, you know, and these are people that this is, this is going to be really challenging for on a personal and professional level. They've reached out to let me know that no matter what direction we go in, we're going to make it work. And I actually had somebody text me a little bit ago who said, we got this. So we do, and here we go. So there's been a tremendous and really inspiring collaboration between really all the stakeholders in our district. So we have, we have school-based leadership teams that have been working many, many hours beyond the regular school year, you know, in the summertime. I think my team is probably sick of the hundreds of texts that I send out to our, our group thread, but Jen and I both really appreciate the work from all them, all their, their input and ideas and collaboration. Parents, we've gotten so much great information from parents through surveys and conversations, letters, you know, phone calls, emails. We have a Fall 2020 Advisory Group where there are staff and parent representatives, also the local Board of Health from both towns are represented there. So we've had some really great conversations there to kind of guide the, you know, the direction that we're going in. Our administrative team, we have spent more time together over the past six months than we probably have over the past ten years. And it's been great to have, have that support for one another. Excuse me, our school committee. You know, I just, I, I can't thank you guys enough. I mean, this is, this is not an easy place for you to be and you know, everybody just feels really, really supported by all of you and you know, we appreciate that we're all together. And then of course, MITA, they've been right there alongside us, you know, representing all of those groups and all of the meetings. So you know, I, I was talking to a colleague from another district and they were talking, they're using the word divisive, and I'm really thankful that I don't feel that in our district. I never have. We've always really worked together. So so thank you all. So and I were talking last week and we, we want to start off with, you know, what is it that we want for our students? Because at the end of the day, we need to come up with something that works for our students. It's not students, and it's not going to be what we're used to or what's typical. But we feel confident that we can come up with something that will work for them in terms of effective learning opportunities. So we want to make sure that the instruction that we're able to provide is developmentally appropriate for our ages. So in our schools, we have two-point-nine-year-olds up through eleven-year-olds. And so we want to make sure that's very different, you know, kindergarten, first grade instruction is very different than, you know, high school, for example. So we want to make sure that we're able to give the kids some, you know, the instruction that is, is at their level and will be effective for them. We want to make sure the, the lessons are engaging. And I think one of the important words there is lessons. We need to provide direct in a structured way throughout, throughout the school day, which is, you know, a little different than, than maybe what, what people saw in the spring. And then we want to make sure that we're able to integrate social, emotional learning and support for students. I can't emphasize that enough. I don't think we could have enough or too much counseling support in all of our schools. These kids have been through a lot. I've seen it firsthand as a, as a parent, as, and as a coach. And then also I've heard a lot of stories, you know, in my role at the school. So another thing that we want for our students, and you know, a lot of these things are things that we've heard clear from, from all of you and in your feedback, which is a structured school day. And we want to be really careful that we're able to balance screen time and hands-on work. So in the spring, it was a lot of, a lot of screen time. Things were kind of unfolding in that kind of emergency response situation. I mean, there was a period of time I wasn't allowed to go in the building. So there was really no way to to manage or to, to, to carry out hands-on work. But we have a lot of great ideas about how we can do that in whatever model we're in. So we think it's really important, especially at the younger grades, that they're not, you know, plugged into a screen from eight-thirty to two-thirty or whatever every day. And we know that kids, especially at the younger grades, they learn best when they're able to use tactile manipulatives and hands-on activities. So we've got some plans there as well. We want to make sure that in a structured school day, that students are engaged with their class for a full day. I mean, these, these kids need structure, they need routine, and they need, they need school. And school may look a little different to them, but we need to, we need to try to replicate as best we can, given the parameters that we're facing. And we want to make sure that there's clear expectations. We've heard a lot about need for accountability. So in terms of taking attendance at the, at the different classes that take place throughout the day, assessments, you know, we need to figure out where, you know, what we've lost, what grounds some students may have lost and how we can kind of fill in those holes, but then also using assessment to drive our instruction, but also to give students feedback and reporting. So in terms of report cards. Okay, so, so our task, and I, I know it's, it's not an enviable one, but we were tasked with developing three models that fit a litany of of parameters and from the guidance from, from the state, which is kind of changing under our feet every minute, you know, right before this call. You know, there was some news that, that, that broke where we were like, okay, now, now what does this mean? So anyway, obviously, the first model is our traditional model, the in-person learning model. And so that's just full-time school like we had last fall, let's say. All students in, all staff in, just, just kind of what we're, what we're used to. The second, I'm actually going to kind of skip out of order here a little bit, but so the, the second would be the, the other extreme from that, which would be a full remote learning model, where students were home for, learning from home through probably Zoom or definitely Zoom, following a typical school day structure that has modifications within the school day schedule, but then also within, in the lessons. But all students would be remotely from home. And then the other is kind of the combination of two things, so the hybrid learning model where fifty percent of the students would be in the school at any given, or on any given day. And the other fifty percent would be at home. So they'd be accessing the same, the same instruction, just half would be home accessing it through Zoom, half would be in the building, in the classroom, following the safety protocols, you know, following that same instruction. And then just, you know, just the footnote at the bottom that we have adopted a six-foot social distancing guideline. So that means that right now until we're able to move further along with this, this pandemic, we cannot have a full in-person learning with all students in the building just yet, just isn't reasonable or responsible. Someone turn it over to Jen to talk about the hybrid model a little bit.
All right. Thanks, John. Hi, everybody. So we have worked, all of the principals have worked really hard at trying to create a hybrid model that we could share with you, the school committee and the community at large. And the hybrid model that we've developed meets local and state health and safety guidelines. As John pointed out earlier, we've been meeting weekly with the administrative team, the Department of Public Health, a number of other people. And oftentimes when we're working on this model and we're trying to figure it out, we'll go back to that meeting and have a conversation with DPH and say, okay, here's what we're thinking. And they've been amazing, and I can't thank them enough for the support that they've given us. The academic program can be delivered in the hybrid model with some modifications to the delivery of instruction. The hybrid model requires lessons to be designed for remote learning and accommodate in-person cohorts. So what we mean by that is teachers will plan and deliver remote instruction for the students to access from either home or from school simultaneously. So this diagram, if you think of the teacher in the center, what she's doing is she's using her remote, her ability or his ability to teach remotely to the students on one side who happen to be in the classroom. In our case, it's usually between nine and eleven or twelve students, and then to the students simultaneously who are at home learning alongside. So this is just a diagram that kind of explains that. In the hybrid model, when we talk about curriculum and assessment, curriculum assessment and grading will follow a typical structure with some modifications. Remote learning will include a balance of hands-on tactile activities and technology. John spoke about this a few minutes ago. We recognize that especially the young students, they can't be on the screen for the entire school day. So teachers will be making up kits and individual, you know, sets of manipulatives and things they need for math or science. And we're going to try to use the best practice that we use if we're live in person, but we would be using it remotely. So that way, students aren't necessarily glued to a screen the entire day, and, and we all feel really strongly about that. And I know the parents do as well. So specialist classes, art, music, PE, library, technology, foreign language. What will happen is students will be either at home, working remotely or in school, and they will all participate in their specials. But they will be participating remotely to limit the exposure. This was a tricky one for us to try to figure it out, and John and I batted around all kinds of ideas, but what it's important for parents to understand is most of our specialists are shared between the two buildings. So there might be somebody at my building two days a week and they're at Memorial School three days a week. And when you think about what the, the Department of Public Health is asking us to do in this cohort model, the idea of having all these people seeing every student in every building and then flipping over and going to the other building, that was really tricky. So what we designed was an opportunity where the specialist teacher will remain in their own classroom and they will actually deliver remote instruction to the students, let's just say in a second-grade classroom, so that the students at home will be receiving the same instruction as the students in the classroom. And then we'd have to get somebody to cover that class during that time. General ed intervention. As most parents know, in school committee, both schools have been using a response to intervention model, which we refer to as RTI. At my school, we call it wind time. We've had different enrichment opportunities. There's a strong chance we probably aren't going to be able to deliver that in the same format as we have in the past. That's actually a hurdle we haven't been, been able to overcome at this point. That's not to say that we can't figure it out, but you know, what we used to do when we were live instruction is small groups of students after being assessed would leave and go work with either a teacher or a teaching assistant, and there was a lot of movement throughout the building. So that's the tricky part right now that we're trying to figure out. Clearly, we can't be operating under that same format. Special ed, I'm not going to get into a lot of detail about that because I know Allison Collins is going to address some of that. So I, I think John and I thought, let's, let's leave that to Allison rather than kind of getting down into the weeds on that. So in a hybrid model, there are technology considerations. So there's a combination of online and hands-on learning experiences. So, you know, what we're trying to do is figure out how we can create a balance for students because the idea of, you know, young students or any student for that matter, just being on a computer all day. I, I, I've been on a computer all day almost all summer and I'm telling you, I'm losing my mind. So it's not healthy. So we're trying to find a balance between the online type of instruction and hands-on learning experiences where maybe you give the student opportunity to release a little bit. But, you know, these, these are challenges that we're trying to figure out. A combination of teacher-directed, we use the word synchronous and asynchronous direct instruction, peer collaboration, assignments and feedback. These are all things that we keep talking about and we're trying to figure out. So, you know, the idea of a teacher standing in front of nine or ten students in their room, but having nine or ten students in their homes, you know, scattered about town. What's the best way that we can use some synchronous live direct instruction and potentially some asynchronous in order to really deliver the best model for students? Collaboration, you know, absolutely, that's what we do with students all day long when we're live, small groups, kids problem solving together. You know, those are some of the considerations we're trying to figure out in a, in a technology world and a remote world, what that's going to look like. And quite honestly, for the students who are alive, if they're six feet apart in their classrooms with masks on, so we're, you know, we're giving a lot of consideration to this and teachers have been involved in a lot of PD and they're going to be gearing up for more PD over those first couple of weeks when we go back. Consideration is what I just spoke about, time on and off the screens throughout the day. They will have breaks for lunch. If you're in the classroom on the particular day, lunch will be in the classroom. They won't be leaving to go to the cafeteria. So their lunch, lunch will be brought in. We're trying to figure out some sort of recess and movement breaks. Still working on that, you know, it's tricky if the weather is inclement, which we all know that happens a lot in New England. The students will have to remain in their classroom during indoor recess. So we've been meeting with teachers and trying to come up with some creative ways for students to have some things to play with, but you know, that's tricky. It's a long day in a classroom, especially, you know, when you're sitting at a desk. So we are working on it, but it is a consideration. All students will be assigned an iPad. So kindergarten through grade two, we recognize that they need iPads because the platform called Seesaw that we're going to use, it works best on that type of a tool. So the tech department's been really diligent and trying to come up with how many do we need and get the order in. And I know Julie has been working on grants and such. Students in grades three through five will have a Chromebook, similar to what families experienced back in the spring, to use at home. Students will be provided with tangible materials to use at home when remote. So for example, it was tricky back in March because we didn't anticipate what happened and we went into a very quick shutdown. And there was a lot of angst on the part of teachers and families that their students, their children didn't have their materials. We're mindful of that now, so we've been meeting and talking with all of our implementation teams about how we can develop individual kits. Because if you think about it, and you'll see pictures soon, if a student is sitting at a desk, you know, the kind that I sat in when I was in school, the old-fashioned desks with the little cubby thing underneath. All of those materials that that child is going to use throughout the day need to be, they need to stay at their desk because we don't have the ability to disinfect and do all of that. So we're working on coming up with all kinds of sort of Ziploc baggies and pencil cases and everything a child will need. Because if you've been in the classrooms, which I'm sure most of you have, that's not typically how we do business. Usually there's bins and buckets, shared materials on tables where children are learning how to collaborate and share. So we are working on it. It's not insurmountable, but it's tricky. And in the hybrid model, what will happen is if the children are in school for two days, everything in their desk that are their own personal materials will have to go in their backpacks when they go home for their, you know, remote days. So because the next batch of kids, say the white kids are coming in because the green kids are working at home, we will disinfect all of the desks and then they're going to put their belongings into that desk. We had looked at leaving enough desks so that everybody had their own desk so that we didn't have to operate that way, but it really impedes the ability to have the children have the six-feet distance between them and actually have some space to freely move a little bit, which I use that term loosely, freely move. So, yeah. So in the hybrid model, the school day schedule, students will be engaged with their teachers and their class throughout the day for a typical school day. So elementary school roughly eight-thirty to two-fifty-five. A full school day does not necessarily mean a full day of screen time. And as I said earlier, we're really working on that, but clearly there will be lunch and recess. I do have to say the specials will be screen time, but I think there will be hands-on opportunities and opportunities for some movement during that time. And we're going to do the best we can to deliver the type of instruction where maybe the teachers can release the students for a little bit to work on something independently away from the screen and then join the class and come back. So we, we are definitely trying to take that into consideration because that's not healthy for anyone to be on the screen like that, especially young students. All students will be assigned to either the white or the green cohort, which would be fifty percent in each cohort. That's so we know which days, as Pam had said earlier, Tuesday and Wednesday, let's just say the greens cohort would be in and Thursday and Friday, the white cohort would be in. The assignments will mirror what both Joanne and Trish talked about last week, the middle school and the high school, so that we can keep immediate families and their households together on the same schedule. This hybrid model would be tricky enough for a family, but then if you had, you know, three, three children and they're on different schedules, that's really hard to imagine. So the cohorts will be about seven to 12 students per class, and it really depends on the grade and the number of students in that grade. So this is just an example. It's, you know, pretty much what Tricia and Joanne shared with you last week. It's an example of what a schedule would look like. We haven't gotten to the point where we've developed those cohorts yet because it's going to be very tricky when you take into consideration the high school schedule and how that has to get put together and you also have to factor in special education. So we haven't quite tackled that yet. So I think a lot depends on, you know, where, which direction we had. So the green cohort would be home on day one. Then they would be in school day two and day three, and then they'd be home four and five. And then you would flip that for the white cohort. And obviously there's one day during the week where everybody would be working remotely. Pam had mentioned the fact that we were talking about Mondays because clearly there are a lot of Monday holidays and that really does throw a little bit of a monkey wrench in the time on learning for the students who would have been going to school on Mondays. So John, I think we're up to you now.
Yeah. So, you know, over the last three or four months, I've had a lot of conversations, you know, theoretical conversations and, and kind of thinking on my own and how can we, how can we come up with something that will fit these parameters? And, you know, kind of conceptually, we can come up with those things. And then for me, when I started actually writing it down and typing it up, there's just, there are a lot of moments where I pause and kind of scratched my head. And then, you know, we have the benefit at Memorial School of a, a beautiful new classroom wing that is like literally days away from being ready for us. So I kind of took a stroll over there and popped my head into some of the classrooms that are, that are set up. So the way that process works with it with a new building is we have to give a map to the furniture companies and then they set up the rooms exactly the way we asked them to set them up based on the maps that we give them. And so we kind of had to pivot and redo the maps with the six feet of social distancing and fifty percent of the, of the enrollment in the class. And so we were able to come up with these maps and kind of set up the classroom. So I just want to kind of give you an idea of what in a hybrid model, what the classrooms would look like. So the the diagram on the left, that's actually Hillary Sheridan's first grade classroom. It's one of our, first grade is one of our smaller class sizes or the, the lower grades are our smaller class sizes. So you can see the eight desks that are there. Next to each desk, there is a wobble stool. So that, you know, if students need, as, as Jen was mentioning, they'll be at their desks a lot. So if they need kind of a break from their traditional seat, they, they have that option to go into a wobble stool. All the desks are six feet apart. They're all facing the same direction. The teacher, teaching station is at the front again, you know, six feet away from the students as well. There would be an interactive board up there and probably their iPad on a tripod or their, or their Chromebook for, for Zoom. And then right you have a fifth grade classroom that's Mrs. Tomiello's classroom. It's one of our larger class sizes. But we were still able to achieve that same setup with the, you know, six feet of social distancing, the, the teacher station at the front of the room. And so, you know, that's kind of what it looks like on a, on a, on a grid. But then when we translate that to real life, this was that first classroom that I walked into. It's beautiful. It's exciting. It's invigorating. It's amazing. It's brand new. But I just couldn't help but look at it and feel that it was very barren. So this is a first grade classroom in the hybrid model. So you have your eight desks, the teacher station at the front. They're actually, we're installing some technology that's using the picture. But it, it looks a lot different than classrooms that, that we're used to. But it achieves those goals of social distancing. And then over in Essex, Jen took this picture of one of her kindergarten classrooms. This kind of hits home for me. As a parent, I have a rising kindergartner, Charlotte, many of you met her in my videos when she popped in the back of the camera in the springtime. So she will be in kindergarten this year. I also have a rising sixth grader. So the last year of elementary school in my town Georgetown and a rising freshman. So this, to me, you know, it just kind of hits home, that little rocker seat just looks a little lonely. And I picture Charlotte sitting in there by herself. And it's just, you know, it's again, kind of barren, sparse. But it does meet the requirements for social distancing. So I wanted to take a minute and just kind of walk you through a typical day for an elementary student. And I'm going to kind of talk in terms of hybrid, but also also touch a little bit on remote. The, when we came up with this concept and this schedule, one of the most important things we feel other than structure and routine and predictability and that sort of thing is we have to be able to pivot from one model to the next and maybe even back again between, between the three models. So this, this really is kind of a modified version of our typical school day schedule. This is just an example schedule. This isn't anyone's actual schedule. But so from eight oh five to eight thirty, that would be arrival time. We would need to do a staggered arrival, probably based on last name. So for eight oh five, so at eight oh five, people with this last name will arrive at eight ten. Students with this last name will arrive, so on and so forth. And then at eight thirty, all students would be expected to class or in a hybrid situation on Zoom. So you're either at your desk ready to learn or on Zoom ready to learn in the Zoom classroom. So then typically we start our day with morning meeting. So that would be a great time for us to start to kind of do some team building, social emotional learning. Maybe some of our ruler or responsive classroom work. So let's say that's from eight thirty to eight forty or so, might be a little bit longer. So the teacher would be conducting that via Zoom for the students at home. And obviously there's students right in front of them. And then maybe this teacher, their class transitions from there to math. So math would follow or all the subjects would follow a modified lesson plan structure. I'll talk a little bit more in depth about that in a second. But then if you look over at the side there, that's kind of where I, where you have those yellow markers. That's where I kind of thought there would be some planned mask breaks. That's, that's going to be a big part of the hybrid model. We'll be giving kids scheduled time for mask breaks, both indoors and outdoors, depending on the, on the situation. But then we want to make sure that teachers feel comfortable to allow students to have as needed mask breaks. So some students may need more mask breaks than others for various reasons. We want to make sure that people feel comfortable with that. So that was just kind of my idea of where we might plug in some mask breaks.
So maybe John Willis, it's Annie.
Yes.
What does a mask break look like and how is, how is it executed?
All right. So there's, I'll give you three examples. So the simple, most basic version would be the students would stay at their desks, which are six feet apart. They would sanitize their hands. They would take their masks off, maybe place them in a container that they have on their desk. You know, they would kind of maybe have like two or three minutes where they mask on, then they would potentially sanitize again and put them, and put their masks back on and then resume. That's one version. Another version would be, you know, maybe it's a walkabout. So it's more of a, a planned kind of a bigger mask break where the class would get up, they would leave in a socially distanced line. So six feet between each student. Maybe take a walk around the building outside with their masks off. Again, sanitize when they take them off, sanitize when they put them back on. That would be another option. A third option on a rainy day is they could maybe go down to the gymnasium. And we would have kind of areas designated for each student. So they could go into a designated area, make sure that they're more than six feet away from one another and take their masks, masks off. You know, I'm not sure if anyone has worn them for an extended period of time. But you do get to a point and, you know, I'm not sure if it's psychological or what it is, you get to a point where you're like, I gotta get this thing off. So that's kind of the idea there.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I think you go back, Pam. So, so the math will follow a modified lesson plan structure. Maybe at nine forty, they, they go out to, you know, outside for their mask breaks. And maybe that walk, walkabout nine forty to eleven, maybe that's their ELA time period. So they would, they would have that kind of modified lesson plan structure, a couple of mask breaks in there, I would imagine. And then from eleven to eleven forty-five would be their lunch and recess period. So Jen kind of touched on this a little bit before, but you know, lunch would either be in the classroom or if we can get creative, maybe outdoors in the nice weather. Obviously no masks when they're eating. And we'd have to maintain that six feet of social distance and, and sanitizing as well. Recession, we've got some thoughts and ideas about recess. That's one of the trickiest parts of the day, I think, other than maybe the restroom. But the recess is definitely tricky and will not look like what we're used to. So then maybe after that, this teacher has art. So Mrs. Yuckins would be in the art room zooming into the classrooms. She would have delivered materials ahead of time for the students to use for the art lesson. You know, maybe we have a a system where, where parents do a drive-through pickup. I was actually kind of thinking earlier of like, like the ice cream truck going through the neighborhood with the material packets and the pop goes the weasel song playing. But somehow we need to get materials home to the students that, that are home. But she would zoom her lesson into the classroom and into the home. We would need to hire a paraprofessional to supervise and support the students in the class because when the students have art, that's when the teachers have their prep period to prepare and, and grade and so forth. So they would, you know, there would need to be mask breaks in there. And again, there's, it's not going to be in a typical art class with, you know, sharing of materials and collaborating. It's going to be very individual. Students having their own materials in their own space and that sort of thing. So after that, you know, in the afternoon, maybe they have their science and social studies and their teacher choice time where they, you know, have class meetings or catch up on a particular subject that maybe they, they want to do a little more work in, again, following following a modified lesson plan structure. And then to be totally honest, probably around two thirty at least, we'll have to start preparing for dismissal. We'll need to do a staggered dismissal. So we will have supervision throughout the halls. We'll call different modes of transportation one at a time. So bike riders first, walkers, then bus students, and then we would have our typical car pickup line that we do at, at both of the schools. But the difference would be students would remain in their classrooms and we would call up to the classrooms to have the car students dismissed. So it's definitely going to take a little bit longer than our typical process for, for dismissal. And so then the next slide is kind of a breakdown of what a lesson may look like. So, and this all has to be modified and adjusted based on the grade level. I, I taught fifth grade math. So that's kind of like the lens that I came at this from. But if I am a first grade teacher and it's a phonics lesson, it might look a lot different than this. But in any event, so maybe from eight forty to eight fifty, eight fifty-five, the teacher would provide some sort of direct instruction to the students at home. And students that are in front of them, so teaching whatever the concept is. And then, you know, maybe at eight fifty-five, that's a time where they do a mask break at their desk. And then the teacher will say, okay, so when everybody go off, we're going to do this practice work or this assignment or, you know, work on this, this problem or this project. And let's everybody come back together at nine twenty. So the students obviously that are in the room are in the room and the teacher can kind of circulate again, staying, you know, maintaining that social distance. And she could leave her Zoom room open so that the students at home, if they have a question or they're stuck or whatever, they could pop into the Zoom room and she could help them through, through that, that vehicle. Obviously very challenging to kind of juggle those two things. But it's, you know, it's a concept that, that we're looking at. So they would come back together at nine twenty and they would kind of work as a whole class to review the work, to share their thinking, share the way they solve their problem, have questions answered, that sort of thing. It could be done as a whole class. It could be done in breakout rooms and the the teacher could bounce between the different breakout rooms. And then maybe, you know, at nine thirty, we're getting to the, to the end of the lesson here. And maybe that's when the teacher signs any at-home work or practice or things that they want to have the kids prepared for the next day. And then it'd probably be time for another mask break. So when you think of, I just, I took a typical like one hour math lesson. There is a lot less in there, I think, than a typical in-person lesson. But nonetheless, it does, you know, meet the, the requirements and fits into a hybrid, hybrid model. Then I can talk about some safety protocols.
Thanks, John. We wanted to talk to you about some of the safety protocol implications. Maintaining the cohort integrity requires adherence to the local and department DESI safety guidelines. So we've talked a lot about the students will need to stay in desks six feet apart. And that was the picture that John showed of a couple of the classrooms at his school and the kindergarten room at my school. Masks must be worn all throughout the day. Breaks will impact instructional time. Students will all need to face the same direction. Face-to-face interaction will be limited. Students will remain in their own classroom for the entire day with scheduled breaks. Community gatherings, whole class by grade, by school cannot occur. So for example, at both of our schools, we have, you know, whole school meetings, which obviously we're not going to be able to do those types of things. More can a teacher do a morning meeting gathering on the rug, which is very typical what you do in an elementary school. The morning meeting will have to take place with the students at their individual desks and the students that are home, you know, that are zooming into the classroom. Small group instruction and intervention will be substantially limited. Students will not be able to share resources, materials and collaborate. So I think we are looking at ways for students to be able to collaborate remotely. But as you can tell from what we're explaining to you, it's going to be impacted clearly. But the resources and materials, we're just going to have to make sure that every student has exactly what they need and they keep it and it's their personal stuff and they are going to have it in their desk and they're also going to take it home when they're working remotely. So as we said earlier, materials will need to be transported to and from school each day, each week. Teaching and reinforcing safety protocols will impinge on instructional and break time. This is something that, you know, the more we dug into this and started working on what the plan would look like, the more we recognized with young students, you know, the first six weeks of school in elementary, we spend a lot of time teaching school-wide expectations, routines for how you gather your materials. And the teachers gradually start easing into actual academic instruction. We still have to do that, but now when you think about all that we've been sharing with you, we are going to have to very explicitly teach students how to take a mask break so that they're safe. We are going to have to teach children how to access the restroom because that's going to be very different than what they've done in the past. So the teaching time of this, we just needed to make you aware that it is going to impact instructional time. You know, just like when we would be teaching our typical routines and expectations, but we have to add this sort of to what we would normally do. Movement breaks will be challenging within the classroom. So, you know, if it's a rainy day and we can't take the kids outside, we have to find a way to have movement breaks, which we embed throughout the school day anyway. But typically if you walk in a classroom and they're having a movement break and John, I can't speak to your school, but I'm guessing it's the same. We, we use like Go Noodle and it's up on the, the screen and the students are dancing and they're lively and they're kind of leaping all over the place and shaking it. And it's, it's really fun to watch. And then they settle back down, they do some deep breathing and they get back in their seats. Well, if you try to think about what that's going to look like, if a child needs to stay within, you know, sort of the space of their desk, we have to figure out what that's going to look like. You know, I sort of envisioned almost taping off a You know, I sort of envisioned almost taping off a section on the floor so that students know where their sort of protected area is. So movement breaks are going to be a little bit tricky within the classroom. The logistics of the restroom, John kind of spoke about this. It is really tricky. I think we're almost there, at least at Essex, you know, John and I talked about a lot, but some of these things are very. Particular to your school and your building because of the way they're laid out. So we are working on that to make sure students are safe, but it's it's definitely going to have an impact on instructional time and how we move children from the classroom to the restroom. And bus safety protocols present numerous challenges, not only the financial ones that I know Pam and Avi have talked to talked about in previous school committee meetings. But the logistical part of keeping students apart from one another on the bus and sort of the social implications. I think as parents and educators, we all know the bus is always ripe for, you know, all kinds of good stuff going on. That's where the kids are socializing and fooling around and. You know, it's going to be tricky. We're clearly going to have to hire bus monitors, hopefully, if we can find them. That that's a tricky job to fill. And probably even more so in the environment we're living in right now. But, you know, we're going to have to have an adult that's not driving the bus supervise the children to make sure they're maintaining these safe practices. So the hybrid model benefits. Well, if anybody worried about small class size. We're going to have small cohorts of students in the classroom. So as we said, probably between seven and twelve students will be in the classroom at one given time. The students will experience a modified in personal in-person school day twice per week. So, you know, if you are one who thinks the benefit of having children in their classroom in front of their teacher is is there. You know, this is clearly a benefit, because two days a week, the teacher will lay eyes on students and vice versa. Staff and students will be able to develop in-person relationships. That's not to say that that can't happen remotely if we were fully remote. As opposed to hybrid, but, you know, there are opportunities to develop these relationships. Although limited and socially distant students will be able to interact in person with staff and peers twice per week. In-person counseling and check-ins can take place, although I will say that the counseling staff did a remarkable job back in the spring with meeting with students remotely. That was a tricky curveball to throw most counselors, and they all rose to the occasion and did a tremendous job. Our health and nursing services can take place in this model. We're trying to work out what the nursing suite will look like and also making sure that we adhere to the guidelines, which you need to have a COVID room, if you will. If a student comes down sick at school, where we can keep them safe and isolated until their parents pick them up. And materials can be sent home each week with students. So hybrid model model challenges, I think we've spoken about most of these at this point in time. It is limited peer-to-peer interaction. There's cooperative learning and collaboration that can take place, but it will be very limited. The sharing of materials, manipulative sensory tools cannot happen, so children will have to have their own individual sets of materials that they will work with. Peer and teacher interaction will be limited by the six-foot social distance guideline. The desks will be in rows, as you saw in the pictures that we shared with you earlier. Limited in-person options for peer-to-peer collaboration and flexible workspaces. Which I I know a lot of the teachers over the last three, four years have developed what we call flexible workspaces within their classroom, where students really have a lot of choice. And where they sit, what type of seat they sit in, they have movement throughout the day where they can change seats. And it's just, you know, sort of a comfortable way to learn, and that's going to make a dramatic change for most of these students. They will remain in their classroom for most of the day. It's pretty much all of the day, other than if there's some outdoor break that can take place. Monitoring masks, sanitizing and hand washing will impinge on instructional time. Movement gross motor activities will be limited. Differentiated instruction, small group, will be limited. So it's not completely unattainable, but it will definitely be limited. Compared to how we used to deliver instruction. Behavior management engagement will be a challenge. So I would like all of you to stop and think. If you were a classroom teacher and you were accustomed to having maybe twenty-two students in front of you. On a day-to-day basis, and you've learned all these amazing strategies and tools to keep the students, you know, well behaved, meeting expectations, engaged in their learning. And a lot of that has to do with how they move, how they work in peer groups together, how engaged they are in the lesson. And now the management side of this will be, you know, roughly ten students in a classroom, but now a teacher has a. Computer off to their side with ten students. And I if you've been zooming for your workplace, you realize how this might pose a great challenge on the screen. So if a child might be having some behavioral challenges in the classroom, which inevitably happens any day. The teacher now has to direct her attention to that student, but now you possibly have ten students on the screen. And gosh only knows how a teacher is going to attend to that. So for me personally. You know, as being a classroom teacher a long time ago, this would be the part that would really throw me a curve, just the overall management of how you teach. Not the pedagogy piece, the actual instruction, but the classroom management of having two students, two groups of students in in two very different places is a real challenge. As I said earlier, we won't have communal gathering spaces. The masks will hinder communication and may impact instruction. So for those of you who have ever watched a phonics lesson. The teachers will be teaching a letter, a sound, and often it has to do with watch my lips, watch my tongue, look where my tongue goes when I make this sound. That's going to be really tricky for our youngest K one-two students, because a phonics lesson with a teacher that's got their face covered like this is really. It's going to be a little tricky. I know for some of our teachers, we've tried to look at getting the kind of masks where you can see through, you know, speech and language. But I know Jason's been working on this, but we're we're trying to overcome some of these challenges. And finally, the materials will have to be transported to and from school each day. For those of you who have young children, you know, on a good day, that can be tricky, just remembering to bring your math journal back or whatever it was you were working on at home. So, parents, you're going to have to really give us a big assist in this, so that every single thing that comes home will come back to school. Because if a student doesn't have what they need, they're going to be spending a day in school, not being, you know, being able to access their learning. So Pam talked a little bit about this earlier, the staffing and the financial implications in a hybrid model. Hiring, as Pam said, we would need to be looking at long-term substitutes for the, you know, twenty twenty-one teachers that might potentially be taking a leave of absence. That's tricky. On a good day, we would need probably four full-time paraprofessionals at each building. And as John alluded to earlier, when the teachers get their prep period where they can actually organize their materials for the lessons that are going to come later in the day. They would need to leave the classroom to do that, and we would need a paraprofessional in each of the classrooms to be able to oversee. The specials, we can't just leave the students alone in the room when the specialist is zooming in. Potentially three bus monitors at each building. This is just a guesstimate at this point in time, because we really don't know. How many students are going to access the buses, but we, you know, we're guessing around three bus monitors, one in each bus. And Pam talked about the addition of daily substitutes, which, you know, a year ago was really challenging for us. We had maybe two, three typical subs that would come in for us. And if we had more staff that was out on a given day when it was flu season or whatever, it was often tricky. We were pulling people from other parts of the building to cover a classroom. In a hybrid model, the materials we spoke about, but additional materials, we're looking at purchasing. If you know how we deliver science instruction in grade three through five, it's a lot of lab work where students work in groups of four or five students together, completing a lab. We're not going to be able to to deliver instruction that way. So we've been looking at ordering enough materials so that every student will have what they need to be able to access this kind of learning individually. Same with art, you know, John said this earlier, like Claudette's been working on figuring out what type of materials she could use and put into possibly little Ziploc baggies or whatever. And then her instruction is going to be impacted in that way, because those students can only use those materials. In a remote model hiring, we're really not looking at additional staff. It's hard to imagine what staff we'd be needing to add in that kind of a model. We wouldn't need the paraprofessionals or the bus monitors. And as far as materials. We still would have to be looking into getting individual student materials, because if the kids are all home, clearly, we need to make sure that they all have access to the tools that they're going to need. So I cannot imagine that you do not have a lot of questions. And if John and I have the answers, we'll feel pretty good about ourselves when we're done, because this is. I'll turn it back over to either Sarah or Pam.
Thank you, Jen and John. I know that all the school committee has questions, and I know that Annie would like to start, so I'm going to let Annie go ahead with her first question.
Okay, so I have several. And I have my mask, so I'm not trying to pull a stunt, but I just want to see if you can hear me with my mask on.
I cannot see you right now, but I can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hold on. Sarah, can you hear me? I have my mask on. It keeps falling off. Hold on. And this really, I'm just, I just want to know if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. I don't need to leave this on. I guess my question, I have several, and I'm wondering about this idea of delivering instruction. To students in the room and then remotely. So I'm focused here. Got kids over here that are watching me. I've got to stay in a certain place, right, because I've got to stay on camera, possibly. And I'm just wondering how we can maybe think about not having. Do we have to have the kids that are remote watching the lesson? Online, or can they be doing some other activity that is related to that lesson, but possibly an independent thing? Or have we thought about how to use any of the classroom aids that we have to help some of them to manage the classroom?
So, yes, to all of those things. And John, if you want, I I don't want to interrupt. It's hard on Zoom. So we've thought about all of these things, and we've talked about all of these things. The tricky thing is when we talk about classroom teaching assistance, the only place where we really have sort of general ed teaching assistance is in kindergarten. Right? You know, at my school and John's school, so they have the capacity to possibly do what you just said, help manage that. The other teaching assistants that we typically have in our building are special education teaching assistants. So they are assigned to groups of students who are on I E Ps. And typically have sort of what we call push-in services support in the classroom. So, you know, Mrs. So-and-so might be in a fifth grade classroom with a group of two or three students who need help during math and supporting them. So they're not going to have the opportunity to be supporting ten kids on a Zoom room. You know, it's not like a general TA. If we could hire general TAs for every classroom, I'd be all over that. That'd be awesome. But one, it's a financial huge burden, and two, I don't even know if we could do that right now, but.
Yeah. So I'm I'm wondering if we can look at the slides that were the last two about hybrid. They were the challenges and the benefits. Because I'm not enamored of the hybrid model, and I'm wondering, okay, how can you deliver effective instruction in a remote manner? Because I and I know we're not talking about remote here, but all of this is supposed to be. Something that we can kind of go back and forth with, but it seems to me that. You know, there's still some challenges in remote in terms of manipulatives and how a teacher conducts a class with, you know. However, many students are tuning in, and I just wondered if you could address the first, which first one was benefits of hybrid model. Because I think there are some of the same benefits under the benefit of the hybrid are the benefits of a remote.
Yes.
And so if you could just look at those two and speak to those two slides, I'd like to hear it about. How can you deliver the remote instruction, because there may be an infection, and we're going to have to do it anyway. So I want to hear what that looks like.
So I think John had spoken about this earlier. The reason we came up with sort of the schedule that we did is we need to be able to move in and out of whether we're hybrid or remote. Without having to completely change our schedule up, because we're not going to have the ability to do that. So, you know, I, as I said earlier, the teachers are going to be experiencing a lot of professional development. We're actually doing some training for people in the district to be trainers, to work with staff, to help them. It's it's a monumental challenge, you know. I think the difference, a lot of parents' feedback was clear that in the spring, it wasn't what we all hoped it could have been. But some of that was some constrictions that were put on us from the state. The other piece is that it happened very quickly, and we did not have the opportunity, although I have to say the teachers did a tremendous job of learning on the fly. I've never seen anything like it. And they were working twenty-four seven, trying to make sure they knew how to deliver instruction in this model that they'd never had an experience in. We've had this summer. I've been in constant contact with teachers who are playing with things. They're learning new tools. They're emailing each other and saying, hey, check this out. So I think, whether it be hybrid or remote, it's going to be very different. I keep saying in the fall. It's like, oh, it's only a couple of weeks away. But I think it will be very different than what people experienced before. So if I look at the benefits, Annie, you said small cohorts of seven to twelve students per classroom. You could say that's a benefit. I would say it's a benefit if you didn't have seven to twelve kids over here on the.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? You're talking about a small group of kids in your classroom, but you really don't have a small group of kids. You still have the same sized class.
Yeah.
Students experience a modified in-person school day twice a week. I I think, you know, a lot of people feel like they want kids face-to-face with their teachers a couple of days a week. So that's a benefit that they will be, but in a very different way than what we're accustomed to.
Is there any way of, well, again, this is my same question I had earlier, which is, you know, what would, if you did remote with some sort of open campus sort of. Ability for students to somehow see their teachers physically, you know, can you make that work in a remote model? So it's it's not really all remote. It's sort of a mod of a remote with opportunities for in-person.
I I think we can do anything we're charged with doing. I I just, we we need, I hate saying this out loud, but we just need some direction. Because what's happening now is we're trying to come up with all these models, but we're not being able to dive deep enough in to do what you're talking about. Because we keep, well, are we doing this or are we not, you know? I mean, I was supposed to have a meeting today with my implementation team, and I emailed them all, said, let's wait till, let's wait, like. You know, at what point do you say we're trying to solve all these problems that we're not sure we have to solve? So.
Right. And so I'm going to let you off the hook on the rest of this, but I just, I'm wondering about S E L resources and if we need more. Because I do feel like there's a lot of stress on these kids that we may not be. Aware of. I know that my kids were very stressed out after nine eleven, and I was totally unaware of it, because I had my TV on all the time. And so I think there's there's outreach that needs to happen, whether we're in a hybrid or a remote model. But. I will take the rest of my questions and for later, but thank you very much for this.
Sure.
I know Teresa wanted to jump in.
I have questions. Thank you. I also have an elementary school student, so I am I am at risk here. So first, I've prioritized, because I actually have many, but I'm prioritizing in on our time. And I'm okay with, if you don't know, you can just say, I don't know, which Annie will. So my first question is, given that there are going going to be lags in learning from the spring, there will be kids who who lost skill levels. How do you plan to assess, given so much assessment was one-on-one? So in this hybrid model, where you can't really work one-on-one, what do you think assessment is going to look like at the beginning of the year? And how do we overcome not having R T I, not having win, to actually support kids who need the instruction? I I don't I don't see how that works without those things. Can you help me understand?
Go ahead. Sorry.
No, I would, it's a really good question, because it, you know, there are a lot of questions that that come come up throughout this process where. And, you know, not not to be flip, but the one of the teachers said, so how do we, how do we handle the restroom situation? I was just like, we'll figure that out. I'm not a hundred percent sure in this moment. So, yeah, I mean, assessments, a lot of it is done. It's designed for in-person. We do have. It's designed for in-person. We do have a number of assessment tools that we can use that are electronic. So for example, there are screeners in Lexia and some of the other programs that we're already using. So we can do some of that work through, through technology. In terms of RTI, you know, we still have the RTI staff, it just might look different. I think in spring, we kind of had two different models at the two schools. I think Jen and I both talked about, you know, the literacy specialist still can do small groups, whether remote or hybrid through Zoom. So that can take place similar to how the special ed team worked in the spring. You know, they had to provide, you know, small group instruction throughout the whole, the entire spring. So we can kind of replicate that to try to catch kids up. There will definitely be some regression. I think there's going to be a rate of regression. Some kids will regress more than others. We always see kids that regress the rest of the summer. We just had two summers. But at the elementary age, I think it's also important to, you know, not ring the alarm entirely because the kids are still developing as humans. And so a lot of the growth that happens at the elementary level is, is human growth and development that is taking place. So, you know, many, many, many students were still working on academics and they're still learning. It might not be the same things that we outline in our curriculum, but I know that my own kids, they learned a ton of things that they would have never have learned if COVID had not happened. So there will be gaps that academic gaps that we have to fill in. And we do still have the staff, it just might look a little different.
Yeah, I would add to that, Teresa, that our teachers are so accustomed to meeting students where they are. You know, we do the assessments and, you know, not, not everybody's in the same place, you know, entering first grade. There's a continuum. They are so accustomed to doing that, that this will be the same. The assessments are going to be critical to us when we get students back and we're still looking into how we can do some of that, either live or electronically. But looking at that data is really going to help us know what do we need to do, not only with some kind of intervention, but you know, how far do we have to back the truck up? And do some of the first grade teachers need to really be going back to the end of kindergarten? So we just don't know yet until the students are in front of us, but they're very accustomed to doing that. And I know they will. They also collaborate so well together as, you know, vertical teams where, you know, they have meetings, they talk about students, they can talk about the curriculum and they do a lot of sharing and, and sharing of ideas. And there might be a chance they have to share some materials based on where the kids are at. So, you know, we're anxious to see where the students are and figure out what that's going to look like.
Yeah, once I, and I love Jennifer, you phrased it well before I even asked the question of, we will, we will do what we're charged with. And I, I understand that. And I know that the teachers will always rise to the occasion and deliver the best possible instruction. But as we're deciding where we feel most confident putting that energy, that's why I'm asking this question of seeing how that is. And I mean, the fact that all of the hard work you did in setting up the classes for the, for this upcoming year, and now in a hybrid model, it's changed to cohort by last name. I mean, that's, that's a big concern for me of how we're going to, particularly, and I love John, what you said about that it is human learning, you know? But there are also kids with, with actual reading deficits and progression and, you know, basic skills that they need to be, to be focusing on. So that's a concern for me. One that I have, I just have two more. One is, could you speak to something that many community members want to know more about, which is considering outdoor instruction?
So. So we have looked into the idea of getting those pop-up canopy things that a lot of folks use at parties or, you know, cross-country meets or whatever. So for sure, we like the idea of being able to get the students outside, whether it be for social, emotional work, whether it be for movement breaks or for actual instruction. I mean, teachers take their kids out all the time, you know, they find quiet places to read. Often, you know, there might be a writing activity where they can bring them outside. The tricky part in my mind will be the technology side of things. Because if you have 10 students and you get them lined up with their masks on and you're going to go out to your designated space, I don't know yet how that would play out. And I'm not a tech guru, but that's going to have to get looked into because what we're doing now is setting up a system. And I think Julian, some folks are actually going to pilot it this week to see how far can a teacher move away from the front of the classroom to still be on the screen? And I don't know, once that tripod's set up and all that, you know, technology in the classroom, how that's going to work if the kids go outside. It might be where the children that are at home get released for a little bit to work on something and then they take the students in the building outside to work on the same type of activity. I think there are workarounds, but the actual direct instruction, I think that could be a little tricky outside because of the technology.
Just to piggyback on that, I think, I think there could be opportunities where teachers leverage some outdoor spaces. We're designing a few at each building, you know, with tents and whiteboards and social distancing circles and that sort of thing. So I think there would be opportunities to go outside, but I know that there's kind of this concept where we would have like an outdoor school. And I just, you know, there are just a lot of obstacles and concerns, bees, allergies, wind, rain, sunlight, security. It just would be really, really.
Okay, thank you. And then I think I want to hold off and just leave my final one as a, as a comment or a request rather than putting you on the spot for an answer. That whatever the decision ends up being, I would, I would ask if you as principals for elementary would consider releasing the, those cohort groups. So whether it's the, and maybe not with teacher assignments if, if things are in transition, but the idea of parents needing to plan for what groups their kids are going to be in, in case of their childcare needs and creating a childcare pod kind of thing. So if it ends up being that we go with a remote version and your, your classes are already, the class assignments are already made, I would ask that you consider releasing that before the typical two weeks before start of school and do it sooner rather than later. And if it ends up being a cohort model for, for a hybrid, that as soon as those are determined so that parents can have time to make those connections with other families that they might not already know and it might not be their typical social circle. So thank you both.
Thank you, definitely.
Thanks, Teresa.
I have a question. Can I go?
Yes.
So I'm, I am going to put both of you on the spot. I'm going to go back to, and I'm sorry, but I know you're up to it. I'm going to go back to what Teresa's first question. And she talked about the teachers meeting the kids where they are, possible gaps, possible regression, but also kids who actually did some of the work last spring and might be a little bit, not further ahead, but maybe not seeing gaps, you know, that some of the other, you know, we might see elsewhere. So I would like to get your opinions on what model you think is the best and most efficient way to meet these kids where they are.
That's really putting us on the spot, huh?
Yep. That's the one I crossed off and didn't do.
I read your mind, Teresa.
I guess I'll go. I knew this was coming.
I did too, but I'm going to let John talk first.
And I'll just speak really candidly. You know, I, I think the, the full in-person fall 2019 model, I think there's no question that that's what's best for kids. We've worked really hard. You know, myself for the past 10 years, Jen, maybe 14, 15 years, you know, our staffs, we've worked really, really hard to put together what, what we offer in that model. You know, I think all of us now are going back to being first-year teachers, first-year principals. It's our first year where I, it's kind of ironic because I have this little inside joke with people. I always say like, hey, let's just start a charter school, like build it the way we want it. And here we are. And it's pretty overwhelming. We're literally building a school from scratch in a sense. In.
We don't want this. This is not the church we want.
Yeah, no, it's not. Yeah, with, with parameters that don't always make sense, as Pam mentioned, you know.
The full in-person is not on the menu. So of the two we're talking about, hybrid and remote?
Yeah, I'm getting there. So when you look at the, the hybrid situation, I think for, you know, older kids, I would say, like my daughter in fifth grade was fine with it. You know, my son in high school, middle school, high school, he was fine with it. Kindergarten students, you know, remote and hybrid, I mean, that's just, that, that, that's really tricky. So I think the benefit on the hybrid side, as we mentioned, is they do get some in-person interaction. But I, you know, I think it's a really hard question because I'm not sure that either of these are the right situation. And I'm just being honest. It's, there's major negatives with, with both models.
Yeah, I think Shannon, that's the problem with the question is that it's hard for, you know, any elementary principal or teacher or staff member to wrap their head around either one of these things. So it's basically picking your poison, you know? Which one, which one do you think is better? And it's a hard question to answer because they, they, we don't want either of these, you know? But, you know, you're asking sort of based on the facts that I see in front of me as a principal and educator and all the work that has been done over the summer to try to get us poised for this hybrid model. I feel like there's so much involved in the hybrid that is going to be detrimental to the impact, the quality of the program that we would be able to deliver if we were more hyper-focused on quality instruction and not all of the logistical stuff that we're trying to figure out with keeping kids safe and how they move and whether the masks are on. And some kids naughty in the back of the room and now the teacher's got 10 kids over here and touch. Like I can't, we will do it and we will figure it out and we will do the best we can if that's the decision that is made. And we're in a position where, you know, ready to go, like we're going to keep meeting and figuring it out. But I have to think as a classroom teacher, I personally would be more comfortable delivering a more robust level of instruction to a group of children that were in front of me that I could potentially have the PAs that I'm working with have all these breakout rooms. I think I'd be able to differentiate better because I'd be worried less about the toggling between the two venues. And I just feel like until we're ready to get back in some sense of normalcy or whatever, if you would ask me and you're hard pressing me.
Jennifer, I'm sorry.
Shannon, yeah.
Somebody had an open mic, so hard pressed for.
If you're, if you're really asking a hard pressed question, I know it might not be popular with a lot of people. I would prefer to go fully remote. I think we can do a better job for all of our children. And if we have to find a way to have some face-to-face time, which it's not insurmountable, I think we can deliver more quality instruction focused on instruction. And the teachers have gotten so good at it and they've had so much training and they're going to continue to have it rather than trying to figure out all the logistical stuff that we're going to be juggling all over the day. I think it's going to impact the students' learning. I worry about the children socially, emotionally, just trying to manage all of the stress of what we're talking about. You know, we have, we're going to have arrows taped in the hallway. Everybody has to walk one way to get to the bathroom. Like, I think if parents came in and actually saw what this looks like, there's not a teacher who's come in to set their room up that hasn't cried. You know, and, and I, I'm, it's just, it's, it's hard. So, you know, it's just where I'm at and whatever you charge me with doing, I will do and we will do it to the best of our ability and we'll make it work.
Can I ask a follow-up, Shannon?
Yeah, Ken, thank you guys. I really appreciate it. Appreciate all the millions of hours. So thank you.
So.
If I jump in?
Oh, I guess so, Ken.
You've, you've had five questions so far. Jennifer and John, just as a follow-up to you, because, because one of the things is, as you say, you're picking your poison. Looking at this and having worked together, I guess, one of the things, what we're talking about now is a starting point. And there's always going to be a tension toward getting back in person because that's, you know, even those were the best hopes for remote learning and technology bringing us all together, seeing that that's years in the future. Can you speak a little bit about having worked together, what you might see with a remote model on like what the transitions would look like and how you might coordinate? Like even basic things like what's the frequency and how do you collaborate between the schools? Because now there's less of a geographic distinction between them, potentially if we're fully remote. And how do we move toward the true of like, okay, the hybrids we're looking at now are not the hybrids we want. But what is, how do you manage? How do you move it there? Can you talk a little about that?
So I want to understand your question, Ken. It's about aligning the two schools. Is that what I'm hearing you're asking?
It, it's that. And it's also if we start with remote, there are folks that have said, okay, if we start with remote, we're never ever going to go back until there's a vaccine or three years from now. I guess, have you spent any time talking about, okay, starting with remote, what are ways that you can move towards a hybrid or an in-person successfully?
Well.
And what might that look like and how do the schools tie together?
I can tell you some of the good things that came out of this is that the staff at both schools have come together in such an incredible way. And we're actually working collaboratively to set sort of expectations for teachers on, you know, what, what, what's the level of expectation for delivering of instruction? You know, how often, how much this, what makes sense? And we're training up people so that they can actually do this well. So I think all the teachers have been working together on this and it's been amazing going on to all these Zoom meetings all summer, watching teachers from Memorial, teachers from the middle school, teacher. If anything, I think this has brought the MARS Day staff closer together because we're all trying to deliver the best instruction we can and we know we need to align our practices. So that's an unintended good outcome from this because I know that's been tricky. Pam's putting up a slide. Are you saving us, Pam?
Well, while we're in, Pam, thank, thank you, Jennifer. That's good. And I'm glad to hear that. And again, I'm hoping that that is something that we continue of, how do we, how do we move forward together? That it isn't just a, okay, we're prepping for school and you're off in your school, John, and we're off in ours. But how do we keep it together?
We've spent more time meeting together this summer than I think we have in the time that I've ever been, I've been here 12 years. And I, it, it's been incredible. And I know more teachers, you know, at the other schools than I ever did before. For all these different committees we're working on, it's actually great. And I, I am thinking that's going to bring us together. And even when we get back to whatever normal might be, I think it's going to really prove to be powerful for the school district.
Yeah, I was actually talking to one of my teachers yesterday about a topic and she was really excited about, it was one of the, one of the trainings that we had gone through and she's like, I can't wait to put my head together with my counterpart in Essex because we're going to come up with awesome ideas together. So that's kind of a little snippet there of what's happening behind the scenes.
And Ken, you know, the other thing is we're working really diligently and God bless our custodial maintenance staff. I can't say enough about on these 95-degree days, you know, you go in and you watch how hard they're working. Our buildings are, at least I can speak for mine, and I think John could as well, like they're, they're being set up for a hybrid model right now as we speak. I was in yesterday and we're making sure that, you know, the right distance. We've got storage units that we're putting things in that we can't use right now. I have amazing teachers who are, we bought a bunch of shelves and they're putting curriculum materials in safe places so that teachers can access it rather than having it in their classrooms. So we are not, we're prepared for that. So if we ended up remote and at some point, you know, you're looking at hybrid, I don't think we're in a bad position to go there. We didn't just stop the press and, you know, wait for a decision. We're pretty much trying to move forward with any model that's going to come our way. So we're prepared. All the schools are, are doing that.
Good. Thank, thank you for the answer, Jennifer. I'll defer back to Annie unless John has something to add. No, no, that's great. Thanks.
I just wanted to follow up on Ken's actually extremely good question. So I mean, I'm wondering if you've imagined that, you know, some people have said that kind of the talking head delivering instruction, just like we're doing it now, is probably not the best model for elementary school students. But is there ever, have you thought at all about maybe doing a recording of one teacher delivering the instruction or the lesson while the other teachers at the same time are able to do small group work? Or, I mean, that idea of, yes, thank you.
I think we've been overwhelmed with the number of ideas and configurations and how we could do things. And Jen's point earlier is we're swimming in, in ideation, but what we need to do is determine the primary goal. So if the primary goal is maintaining purity of the program, I think you start to see a pattern, a fact pattern that supports one choice. But if the primary goal is to address the community childcare need and the belief that children are better served by being in school by, for some time, no matter how different it may be, then the fact pattern is going to push us in a different direction. So I think either is achievable at the elementary level. We've laid out the case of what you can get for one or the other flavor at the secondary. So I think the conversation, I think once we. So I think the conversation, I think once we lock in on one or the other, it doesn't negate any in-person activity. We're still going to have to address high-need students, special needs students whose services can't necessarily be delivered online. And Allison will speak to that briefly. But I think one of the frustrations, I'm going to be very honest, that the meetings that we get into with everyone, is they're well-intentioned and it's more ideas. But we don't ever get to the root, solving the root problem, which is, are we going to prioritize getting back in, which is what the state asked us to do and we've been attempting to comply? Or are we going to prioritize purity of the program? Because we think that's better and more in line with our local mission. And I think that helps us answer the question.
Pam, thank you for putting it that way. And I guess I, I look, one of the things that I, I worry about, and I think you're kind of stating it is, it's important almost to pick a starting point to get the wheels in motion. And then, and then we're, that isn't going to be the static starting point, it will keep moving from there. Is what I'm hearing.
Agreed, and I, and I think the attempt in our presentations hasn't been necessarily to say, one is a better priority than the other, I think that's what we're all struggling with. But to have full disclosure about what's being offered, because I think when we looked at what was dissatisfying about remote learning, a lot of it had to do with intensity of the, the academic program, length of the day, focus on learning. And I think what we're seeing as we make, put the hybrid together is that initially, the focus will be on complying and developing new routines and expectations. And we're not, I'm not really sure when we get into the, to the real meat of the curriculum and the principals can speak to that more. But it strikes me that we'll spend a good deal of time just working on reculturing the building to meet our public safety responsibilities. And that's not where we want to be at all, but that's what's being thrust upon us. So the, the push to get kids back in school has been light on academic program and developmental needs other than the very serious components of SCL in terms of identifying kids with food insecurity, kids in abusive homes, kids who may not have proper supervision. And what we do know about our community is that necessarily isn't our, our largest, we don't have an incredibly large subgroup. We know how to get services to those kids and we've been doing that throughout the shutdown. What we need to do is decide where we want to put our priority energy. And we can really go either way, we just need to fully disclose if we go in one direction, it will look like this. And if we go in the other direction, it will look like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's the discussion we need to have at this table, which is where are we going to place the priority? Because remember, we have a very large number of families who reported high level of, of, very comfortable coming back to school in the hybrid model. So the fears we may have as an internal organization may not be reflected in the community. And we're going to have to reconcile that. And if we choose a priority about what the organization needs to deliver, I think it helps to address that question as well.
Pam, I, I just want to emphasize one thing that I think I heard and just to make sure I caught that probably a lot of people are, you've learned, the district has learned from what went on in the spring and kind of the ups and downs of all that. And you focused on developing, whether it's the hybrid or the remote, it, both of those have been developed with an eye toward how do we not have the, the problems and the issues that we had? And how do we make a better program that's more approaches the full in-person?
Absolutely.
So that's important to hear, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry, I keep blabbing Sarah.
No, no problem.
No, that's great. Um, I just want to make sure all the school committee will have a chance to ask their questions. So I wonder if Eric or Matt wants to weigh in at all?
Yeah, I had two questions, if that's all right. I'm not sure who this would be directed to, Pam, maybe you. I know we've looked at, we've looked at the budget of the two models. I know we've had some comments about the tremendous cost of potentially hybrid. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the goal is to, i- if, if, if we do start primarily remote, but the goal is to eventually to get to hybrid, it's really not, is it really not, you know, remote cost versus hybrid cost, it's remote moving towards a hybrid cost? Because I mean, long, if you move to hybrid, say January 21, you still need PPE, you still need probably HVAC and you still need stuff like that. So I guess, are you planning on allocating those funds now potentially? Or, I mean, have you built it in? Because it looked like it could be, like that remote could increase by, you know, it could be 0.5 of hybrid come January. I just want to make sure the numbers are like, so it's not really 571 versus 1.42, but it's really like maybe 1.2 versus, or like 100, a million versus 1.4 or something like that?
Right, so I thi- I think you can make like a basic 50% assumption. If we started in January on hybrid, we could assume half the cost. What I would hope we could achieve, and, and again, it's going to deter, be based on collaborative bargaining and our ability to retain staff is, a lot of the costs are tied up in staffing. Transportation's a, a large concern, PPE will get covered by some of the grants that we're anticipating reimbursement from. Same with technology, we have a large technology cost regardless of the model that we choose. We know some of the dollars that we're getting in grants and reimbursement can be applied to that. What we likely aren't going to get money for is the staffing costs. So the staffing costs, if we went in January, we could hopefully reduce those even less, even greater than 50% if we can get full buy-in from the staff and reduce the amount of leaves. You know, if we have full capacity staff, we have a, we can reduce the cost right off the, right off the top. But yes, very logical, if it's, if it's 50% of the year or three quarters of the year, we can start to reduce our estimates proportionately.
Thanks, and the only other question is, I know you, we touched on potentially community partnerships, like the Y or something like that, how far have those conversations progressed? Are they, like, is there something, like, what, what could that look like? The, the, a capacity idea, like, I'm just trying to think for parents who might be concerned about something like that.
We're not at capacity yet, but we do have an ongoing relationship. The Y provides after-school services for us throughout the year. So they are also itching to know whether or not they're going back to their traditional program or they, whether they can try to stand up something during the day. We'll be talking with them again on Wednesday.
And would there be any cost to parents for something like that?
So the one thing working with the Y and, and, and folks who have been on those calls, my brain, I don't know if I'm going to remember all of the details of it, but they, they will offer vouchers and subsidies for families who qualify. And I think part of the discussion is, you know, again, brainstorming is, is there a way to take some of our resources and create an opportunity to provide some childcare if we're not in full-time? You know, is there a cost benefit to not outlaying all of the additional costs for substitutes and facilities changes? And perhaps try to underwrite some of that? Or the Y is also really good with donors and finding other ways to, to identify funding sources to, to cut down the cost to parents. I think we also need to have a conversation with our, our other partner, which is the Manchester Parks and Rec. Y has been identified as an emergency childcare provider, meeting all of the certifications, so we turn to them first. So they have been fantastic partners over the past few years. So I have every confidence they'll give us the full, the full court press to get us what we need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eric, are you out there? Do you have any questions for the elementary school principals?
I am here, I don't necessarily have any other questions based on our discussion. I, I have some thoughts and comments based on where I am leaning, but I don't know if that's the time for that.
Go for it, Eric.
Okay. Sure, so I would just preface my comments with, with two things. First, you know, I'm, I'm part of a family with two working parents. We have two children at the elementary school level, one going into kindergarten, one going into the fourth grade. And I fully understand the challenges that full remote poses. We lived that, we experienced it last spring, so I really know how difficult that is. Second, I think we have a really strong school district with a unique makeup. And I've been talking to a lot of parents and I'm hearing what other districts are doing. I don't think that we should base our decision on what other towns or districts are doing. Initially, and I think I've mentioned it on our, the past couple meetings or calls, I was definitely in favor of a hybrid, at least for the elementary schools, particularly those younger students with specific learning difficulties and needs. And, and giving, given the circumstances, I know that last spring was not the best learning experience. But due to all the different factors that I think, you know, Jennifer and John really illustrated well in their presentation, staffing, logistics that the hybrid model requires, combined with the financial commitment and the model and the chance that we'll also pivot to the full remote anyway. I'm currently of the belief that full remote to at least start the year, with the hope that we can get back to in-person school later in the year is the best of several not-great options. I am happy to see that in, in Pam's early slides, that there's going to be a way to prioritize at least some in-person learning, maybe for students who have special needs. That was one of my main concerns, particularly with the younger kids. So really, I mean, that, that's about all I have. And I, I just want to thank, you know, Pam and the administrators, the teachers, the nurses, parent volunteers for everything that they've done to really navigate this completely difficult. That's all I have.
Thanks, Eric. I don't have any more questions for John and Jen. I feel like you guys have done amazing work in putting together these three models. I know it's been just emotional and a ton of work. I mean, I have concerns, I have the same concerns everybody else does as a former first-grade teacher. My big concerns that I've underlined in my notes in multiple colored pens here. I think the biggest one is the, the difficulty in being able to differentiate instruction in the hybrid model. I think that really seems like almost an impossible task with the, trying to manage the Zoom kids and the kids in the classroom. I was so excited when I first heard that there was going to be and that you could figure, that you guys had figured out how to do this Zoom-ing in and Zooming out, and it seemed really exciting. But when I think about how hard it would be to, to actually manage that and manage all the logistics of it, it's, it seems like it would be sort of crazy-making. So yes, I have all the same concerns as everybody else and no more questions for you. So maybe.
Are we ready to hear from Allison then?
I think so, yeah.
Awesome.
Hi, everybody, sorry, I was trying to unmute myself and my notes up here at the same time. So I'm here to give you a status report on special education. We are not ready to roll out an extensive plan of options like the schools have because our planning is largely dependent on what the school committee decides and determines and votes on in terms of how we're moving forward. But let me talk to you a little bit about our, just what our status is with special education right now and what is, just what I have in mind, what the district has in mind in ter- to guide our decision-making going forward. And I promise to be brief. So we've received guidance from the Department of Ed around what special education should look like in the fall. We have information about, I'd call it guiding principles from them. And what those principles say is that students must receive all services documented in their IEPs through in-person instruction, remote, or a combination of both, that we need to focus on what they call an instruction and services delivery model versus giving resources and supports, which was the initial model, starting in March, that started in March. They want, they are supporting our need to abide by current health and safety requirements. So that is a factor that will ultimately influence what programming looks like, just like it will for everybody. And another charge that the Department of Ed has given us is that we should provide in-person instruction as much as we can. They have actually prioritized specifically preschool and high-need students. And I'm going to define what high-need student means to the Department of Ed. This is their language that they've given us. So they are saying that high-need students have the majority of their services provided outside the general education classroom with special education services constituting more than 75% of the student's school day and those services being provided by special education teachers and related service providers. Another element of high-needs that they want us to look at is students who primarily use aided or augmentative communication. So that's the guidance that we have from the Department of Ed, which is very much on my mind as I will be working with staff and talking to parents and attempting to sort through this once we know what the basic structures of school will look like at each level. Just some things that we're thinking about and that I'm thinking about in planning for our district are, it depends what the model looks like. And we may learn more about that tonight, if there's a vote on that tonight or later. But once we learn that, we, special ed students for the most part are in inclusive settings. And so their programming is very much dependent on what general ed would, will look like. Our plan is to deliver IEP services regardless of model, we will find a way to do that. We did so in the spring and I received a lot of favorable feedback on that. But it will be even more structured because it will be within the context of a more structured school day, more typical school day, if we can call anything typical right now. Because some of the special education services, at least, and in some cases all services, will be delivered remotely, we will be creating remote learning plans. We will be developing them, we will be seeking parent input on the plans. And some of that will occur after the liaisons return to school. We'll be, they'll be in touch with parents and working through that. Just, I'm envisioning a continuum. When we think about students, thinking about students on a continuum, from high-need students who are currently in specialized programs to students who need extra problem-solving to access remote. Parents have made me aware to some degree of students who are just, we need to come up with some additional planning for those students. And then the continuum will go all the way to students who are in full inclusion programs and can access remote learning given school day structure and their typical IEP supports. So that's the continuum that I envision in planning for as we're able to move forward. Any discussion of in-person services will include consideration of public health guidance. And particularly Pam talked about cohort integrity. So we, in special education, we have students who move in a lot of different directions. But we build what, the plan that we make going forward will be very attentive to this need to avoid mixing cohorts of teachers and students. We're looking to, if there are in-person services and we can do that to any degree, we're just looking to minimize the number of contacts a student or teacher has during a school day. And, and that's basically some of the guiding principles that we have and also what we've been given by the Department of Education. And that is my, my status report for today. I will have more information certainly as we start to solidify what general ed will look like. Does anyone have questions?
Thank you, Allison, I don't have any questions, thank you though for your presentation. I know you're working really hard to make sure we have everything in place for our students in special education especially. But does any other school committee member have a question for Allison?
I have a question about budget. I'm wondering, given what you've outlined here, if there is going to be, have we, have we given this a close look? I don't care if you're doing hybrid or remote. If, if, if the numbers are reflected in the, in the estimates that Pam has put together or if we need to revisit. If the numbers are reflected in the estimates that Pam has put together, or if we need to revisit that. And also SEL, does that come under your your review, or is that Julie?
That's me.
I'm worried about that, too.
Well, so it's a little bit of both. Julie handles SEL from more of a curriculum standpoint, and I oversee the counselors. So we partner. We partner around that. I want to be clear. And I want to answer your question about the budget. So Pam has included it in the budget. If she I need correction, she will correct me, but basically there's an impact if students are in person, there's an impact on PPE, which we have considered. So there's an additional expense for PPE. But in terms of the staffing, the biggest implication would be if we have teachers taking leaves from in-person, if there are in-person assignments, again, is this all needs to be sorted out as we get more concrete information about what the overall program looks like. But if if in-person is a piece of what we're doing and teachers take leaves from those in-person positions, then there is a cost associated with that. Pam, is there anything I'm not thinking of?
No, I think you I think you've identified it. It keeps coming back to staffing, available staffing, and the cost of replacement staffing is one of the major budget considerations.
I guess I would add one additional piece is special ed transportation, but there's just a small amount of that in district. It's mostly out of district, which is kind of a separate issue. So there could be some associated transportation costs, but they're not a big piece of this.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any other questions if people have them.
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you, Allison. I know you guys all have been doing an absolutely tremendous amount of work. And this isn't easy because we don't really know what the answer is. So thank you very much. I just want to let you know how much we all appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And it is challenging, and I look forward to kind of having the next level of decisions in place so we can jump into our next phase of planning with this for special ed.
Pam, do you?
Sorry, yeah, I can I can just round out with a couple of quick updates. So the chart that I keep going back to is really just a very high-level overview of the hybrid and the primarily remote, and I purposely calling it primarily remote because I do think there are opportunities and there will be in-person components, even if we are delivering program through remote access. That being said, one thing I do want to point out is it surfaced in conversation tonight, and it's something that is weighing on me. I can see, I feel like on any given day, I can make a pretty strong argument for either sides of this column, and sometimes I find myself feeling that each level should have a different operating mode, and we can talk a little bit about that later in our discussion. But I don't want us to lose sight that even if we start in part or in full and some remote fashion this year, my concern is that and I think Ken has been really good at bringing this up, we are going to have to get prepared to break through the fear and to adjust to the new reality because we don't know how long this is going to last. And if we can't, if we don't have enough pieces in place now to do so, I think we have to continually revisit a set of indicators to see when we're going to be ready to go back and have an active plan on the shelf to do so. I'm not necessarily I'm not comfortable saying this is the way it's going to be for the full year, you know, if we if we decide on remote. Or if we decide on hybrid, this is how it's going to be until there's a vaccine. I don't think the timeline is clear enough. That's another piece of the puzzle I would love to have, you know, if it were really just six months out. I think I could easily recommend one thing over the other, knowing that there was relief in sight. But I think we're going to have to get comfortable with continually revisiting it and creating some objective indicators to use as a reference point to see if we're ready to make a move to the next level. Now, when we originally started talking about this, we had full in-person, like nothing had ever happened was on the was in one of the columns, then kind of the modified in-person, which is where we spent the first part of the summer, seeing if we could get all kids in school. And now we're all the way over to the right-hand side of the continuum, looking at hybrid and remote, and I think what I'm hearing is it's probably going potentially, it could be a combination of the two. So I just kind of set out a few generalized, and we can discuss this as a group and come up with better indicators to watch, but just two boxes on the bottle on the bottom to look at mode transition, knowing that we should be thinking about being able to slide back and forth between either of these options, and our goal should be to try to move to full in-person over time. There are just a few top-level items that that I talked about, and I think they they tie back to what I identified as problems we have just not been able to solve yet or found anyone externally who can solve them for us. So just something to keep in the back of our minds that I think we need to build in regular checkpoints, regardless of what our decision is, to make sure that we are using the right modes at the right time. I think there is something coming out. I think I saw it drop in my inbox while we were sitting here. The state has put together a metric for opening and closing based on hot zones within the state. So I haven't dug into it enough to explain it to anyone just yet, but I think they're trying to help us with that ongoing conversation about what metrics should we use to determine whether it's safe or not from a spread point of view. So just kind of a little tool here to use for decision-making. And then something else that I just haven't, we haven't really talked about, but I think it's important because I am pretty aware that no matter what we decide, people are not going to, not everyone will be satisfied. It won't be the right fit for them, and that's understandable because typically, we're trying to, in our normal operations, individualize program and experience as much as possible. And I'm sure this feels like it's very compliance-driven and not a lot in terms of being able to customize your experience. So one thing I would like parents to keep in mind is that they do have some options. I feel like like the admin team and what they're trying to work through, they're not necessarily the best options. But if you're on board with the hybrid remote or the sliding between the hybrid and the remote models, basically, it's your choice. You can toggle between them for most of the year. Like, if you personally don't feel comfortable returning your child to school at this point in time, if we open in the hybrid, you would have the opportunity to choose just the full remote only. That's where how we structure the hybrid becomes important. Because if you're in the remote-only crew, you can still become be part of an active classroom if we're using the model that we've outlined to this point. If you chose remote only, and then you're kind of watching COVID, you're seeing the hybrid go better than you expected. There isn't an outbreak. You're growing more comfortable with it, and you want to transition your student back into the hybrid in-person component. We're just going to ask that you wait for a transition point in the year, a quarter semester, and we can bring them back in so we can reorganize the cohort at a transition point. Now, if you've just had enough of all of this discussion and you're like, call me when COVID's over. We want to do our own thing. Asynchronous works for us. We've got a few options through the DESC Remote Learning Academy. It's an online platform. It works fairly independently. You can go at your own pace. You can work at the time of day that you'd like. You would still be under the MERSD umbrella. It would be a program we're offering, kind of like an alt program. And we would provide a faculty advisor, but it's not direct instruction from anyone on staff. So you would have an option for to choose an independent remote model. And then if that if you're done with remote and you're done with the hybrid and remote discussions and what we're going to do, and we've had a lot of a few inquiries, homeschooling is always an option, but that's a complete independent endeavor from MERSD. So you essentially would be withdrawing your child from the district for the time in which you'd want to homeschool them. There are some requirements that we will need a plan from families choosing to do so. Julie Riley, the Director of Curriculum Instruction, heads up our homeschool program, and she will work with you and get you the resources that you need so you can complete the program, the plan submission, so we can have that on file. So we'll put this out in print. We'll put this up on the website. There are options for you. So a little opportunity to to kind of pick and choose a bit of what is going to work best for your family. One other question, this is just kind of an FAQ. We keep we keep referencing the PPE order, but we never really show it to you. This is if this is something you're interested in, this will also be available in the slide deck. We've ordered a three-month supply. It has arrived, is my understanding. And what we did was used the Department of Ed guidance to get the right amount of quantities. As Allison mentioned, we talked with her about what the specialized needs may be in her department, the nurses as well. So we are well-stocked, at least for the first three months. If we go back to hybrid, I think the growing question is what, you know, we should order now for the next three months. So as soon as we have a decision, I think it's time to place the next order so we don't get caught in that in a spot where we are out of supply and needing to be in school. That came up in a conversation with some other districts today. So I think that about wraps where we are. We've targeted one more thing, and I know it's getting late, just what the beginning of the school year might look like. Right now, we're looking at August 31st to September 15th as the mandated teacher training, so they will be back on site and engaging in training programs designed to support them for the beginning of the school year. September 16th is the first day for students. Remote instructional program begins, whether that's part of hybrid or part of standalone remote. There will be onsite and in-person getting started activities. Depending on the mode we choose, they may look slightly different. I would anticipate that in the hybrid, the first couple of weeks are going to be about establishing new routines and safety protocols. I think the elementary principals made that clear. The same would be true at the secondary. We're going to have to just get everybody reconditioned to the new normal of mask wearing and following one-way hallways, et cetera. And then I would anticipate some community building and ruler activities to help people transition. We're aware of the emotional toll this has taken, and I think we would be dedicating time in each building to helping kids re-acclimate to the new to the new school environment. If it were remote, we would be leveraging the good weather, some outdoor space, and doing some get-to-know-you activities and community building activities with the same thing in mind as we have in part two here, which is to kind of address the fact that if we're going to live together in a remote classroom all year, it would be nice to at least bring people together a few times so we can have some actual FaceTime or masked or not, but at least kind of get to know you in a personal sense. And then use our ruler charters and our ruler protocols for starting to unpack some of the social-emotional needs that have are associated with the close down. And then we would be building in some online parenting training, parent training through that. Again, depending on which model we're in, remote is going to be an important part, so there will be some technology tools training there for parents. Then just in thinking about kind of where we go from there, let's say we resume the school's calendar October 1, continue with whatever the identified model is until there's cause to revert or be able to move ahead. Maybe the cure comes sooner than we think. And then by November 2nd, I think our meeting's technically November 3rd. I think we should do a formal assessment of the model and the next steps, look at some transition indicators and see whether we need to transition to hybrid for a second semester if we start with remote, and if we're in hybrid, are there conditions such that we can start to come back to some type of full in-person? This may be a little pie in the sky. But again, I think it's important that we keep building in those checkpoints. So that is it for tonight. We're at the same place we landed last week, but we check another meeting off off the list, and we should have an updated plan. It won't be the final version. The final version will come next week, but we will have a plan update available on Friday with with some more detail around some of the protocols that were referenced tonight. So that's where we are.
Sarah?
Yes.
I have a draft motion I'd like to propose. I'm hoping that we can discuss it once we if it gets a second, and I also think it's a valuable exercise to just talk about why you would choose or not choose to go with it. But I move that the Manchester Essex Regional School District adopt remote K to 12 learning model, prioritizing and making available in-person opportunities for high and special needs students and others as recommended and approved by the superintendent. The school committee will review data and assess the possibility of the hybrid and return-to-school models at the first school committee meeting of each subsequent month.
Second, Whitman. All right, discussion.
So the reason I'm I'm moving forward with this is last last week and this week have convinced me that educationally and financially, a remote model at this point is our best plan. And I attended last night's Board of Slock meeting in Essex. I'm sure Manchester, I think, is in the same place that we are, and that is that they're looking for departments to either severely reduce their budgets or cut, and they haven't gotten to that point yet, but any dollars that we spend, we're spending out of our reserve bucket. And if you've been following the school committee at all in the past year or two, you know that we are already dipping into our reserves, and the cost of hybrid is extremely expensive, and my concern is the risk reward of going to hybrid and having an infection and kids and everyone's going home. So there's disruption in educational delivery there. There's also disruption in the amount of money we plan and spend. And then where do all of those dollars go? So and what I've heard from educators is we can do much better than we did in the in the spring, and we want to be accountable. I mean, I one of the teachers said this in a meeting a few weeks ago, we can do better and we want to do better. So I would like to go forward and talk about how we make remote the most robust educational program that Manchester Essex residents expect. So that's where I am, and I am interested in what other people think.
Can I take a step further here? So here's what I've been thinking. Like Pam, one day I think, oh, this, you know, remote would be great. Then the next day, I think hybrid would be great. And I think you could make very cogent arguments on either side, but what I don't think anyone will disagree upon is the fact we're going to be shut down at some point. So I have a problem with committing all those resources to a possible situation that might last a few weeks because we're going to need those resources on the back end when we all do come together, and the kids are going to need support, both academically and socially emotionally. However, I struggle with the fact that the little kids need more in-person than the big kids do. So what I kind of think is a little bit of a compromise here is I'd like to investigate possibly starting remote for the first couple of weeks or see how how it goes, and then phase it in, just like Governor Baker did. Governor Baker did the whole reopening, phases, phases, phases. So what I think I'd like to explore possibly, if anybody's on board, remote for a little while. And again, Pam, you said we identify certain indicators. We can we can discuss that and discuss when we want to reexamine the indicators to figure out what the next move is. But start online, phase in the little guys, phase in K through two, see how that goes for a while, because I think they need the, you know, personal attention, and then see how that goes, maybe phase in three through five, see how that goes, and then wait and see. I think we've pretty much heard that the program is not going to be what the older kids need. So I think they stay online for as long as, you know, we need to do that. But I'd like to talk about possibly phasing in. So that's kind of where I am. But I think we should make a decision tonight.
Teresa?
To comment on Shannon, on your thoughts there, I agree that there needs to be a an outline, a broader picture of how do we face this, and how do we start to do that, and certainly that what those benchmarks are going to be, and that has to be part of the plan. One thing that I would be concerned about with including that in in tonight's vote, though, would be to that would be that we would want to take would be to, that would be that we would want to take a much closer look at that process on its own. And I would rather we, we set aside this time to, to just get started in remote. Because even if we're looking at phasing in that, if we start talking about that now, it becomes another source of anxiety for teachers. Is this going to be two weeks? Am I only doing this? And I also feel like if we're going to commit to one plan, whether it's hybrid or remote, and I will spoiler alert, I am in favor of a remote program at this time. I think, I think the hybrid decimates our academic program. I, I just, it, I just don't see it being reasonable for a top, top performing district, including at the elementary level. I don't see the benefits outweighing the damage to the program. Given the way Pam has expressed the idea of by invitation, having some in person. But I think we need to give the process some time to settle in so that we can even evaluate. Do we have a remote learning situation here? And we might find that, no, it's not what we want. But if we don't give it a good chunk of time to get started before we start phasing anything in, then I think we're still in this limbo and what we're trying for is consistency. That's just my thought based on your comment, Ken.
Do Eric or Matt or Ken want to weigh in? I can't see your faces on the call.
Very way down the list, this is Ken. Annie, I guess. I, as I'm always going to pick a point to disagree with you, and as leading would be the, the, the cost part of it. I would tend to, I was going to say, I can act as this cost isn't an issue. The, the primary one that we've had repeated several times on this call is on these school committee discussions, the primary point is that we need to have, provide the appropriate education for our students in the district. That's first and foremost, what's top on our, on our mission. I guess what I put in front of that, the only thing I put in front of that is making sure that that's done safely. That everybody goes home in the same shape or if not better than when they arrived. And there's definitely a lot of safety considerations around this, even just getting back in on the restart. My bias right now is towards, we've done a lot of big thinking. As Pam has said, we've got to take that big thinking and all the exploratory, boil it down into something that we can start with, starting on a smaller scale to make sure that it can be done and done very well. And then only then can we scale it safely. So I'm inclined to kind of, I don't think I'm going to be getting more input before, there's, there's been a lot said, there've been some phenomenal letters and outreach from the community, from the parents, from the teachers, from pretty much every stakeholder in the district. And I'm not normally out there in amongst people, but I'm getting a lot of that. And I think we probably need to, I'm in favor of making a decision tonight and moving forward. One way, just, but let's, let's make a decision and get through this tonight, I think.
Thanks, Ken. Eric, Eric kind of already weighed in on this. Eric, did you want to say anything else? Are you good?
No, I mean, the only thing I was going to say, and not to straddle the fence between Shannon and Teresa's thoughts, but I agree with Shannon. I think, you know, I would, I would like to certainly start planning to get maybe the younger kids in first. But I agree with Teresa that I don't want that to take away from the planning for the curriculum that's going to be offered right as we get into mid-September. So I think that might be something we need to talk about a little bit more. So, but, but that's just my.
Thanks. Matt, and Matt, did you want to weigh in?
Yep. And I know I'm newer to the, the committee, but I've also been like the operations director down in Foxborough and going through all the same stuff that the folks up here have been going through. And I, first I do agree, all I want is a decision so that the things that are pending, I can move to something actionable. And every day that goes by, I feel like I'm running out of time to make them actionable and to make them successful. So I agree that a decision should be made tonight. And much like everyone else, each week I've gone from, we need to bring kids back to, we should do hybrid to, it should be half and half. And now, given the constraints, given the logistics and the hurdles I've had to jump through. And as Pam had echoed, with staffing being a major variable and just with people with very legitimate reasons for either needing to, to not be part of this side of the school year, I just, I think inevitably, all remote does make sense. So I am in favor of that as well.
All right. Well.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Depending on what is decided upon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, this is only for school committee members. So I, we're not taking questions from the audience. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. So.
Sarah, one quick thing that Matt, that Matt said that I, I want to, I guess I want to emphasize, and I, I like that it came up. If we do, if we do go with a full remote, I, I like what was, I appreciate what was shared, especially by Pam about the, that we're doing the preparation for hybrid. I don't really want to, I, to some extent, Annie, I hear your concerns about spending from reserves and the rest. But I really don't want in the next several months, if we start with remote to be, oh, well, we didn't budget for, we're not going to, we're just going to stay in remote. We have to always have that tension of, how do we, you know, what's the next thing that we need to be able to scale and address? That next high need cohort, that next thing that bump up the educational experience. And I almost, I know it's easy to say, but I don't want us to have the spending, the higher spending of hybrid to be an obstacle to moving forward or to, to at least preparing for an event that we need to continue going, ordering more PPE or whatever.
Yeah, I think, Ken, that brings back to where I started tonight, which was that we, we're going to need to be flexible. And so we want to maintain our flexibility.
Can I, can I speak to that point when you're ready?
Who's, who's talking?
Annie Cameron.
Annie, you can't, I couldn't see your head there.
I know, because I'm stuffing my face. So I, I do want to defend myself. I, I educationally have not felt that remote, that hybrid has been a good plan from the past few meetings. So, and that's why I asked, what is the goal of hybrid education? And hybrid education to me seems to be getting people in a building. That is not an educational goal to me. So that said, in terms of spending, you know, we do have to be mindful of spending because, you have your hand up, Pam?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to make light of the goal of getting the kids in the building because I think minds see positive benefit from the adult child interaction and having the routine of having school personnel be in touch with kids, being able to identify concerns. So I think it comes from a place of caring and a level of SEL implementation that maybe not our main focus of SEL, but it's definitely, definitely impacts a group of students and families that we have. So it's not just about shoving them in the building to make sure we're making a point. It's about saying that what comes from those interactions, as different as they might be, still provides a more, a positive outcome in a positive monitoring system for kids. That's all. And that may or may not be a high priority for our particular district and program.
Okay. And I didn't, I don't, I didn't say shoving. But I do, I do think that there is a discussion to be had after whatever we decide about, okay, if we're going to do this, there's a lot of things that have to be discussed. And I think that there are school committee priorities that we feel are important to communicate to the district about what our expectations are based on what we are hearing from our constituents. So I, that's a different conversation. I want to stick to the conversation about the motion. But that's, I, I do want to actually, Sarah asked for some time to talk about, okay, what is, what are our expectations?
I did. Okay, well, I was just going to say what I think about your motion. I, I think I left. Wait, can you hear me? I feel like I froze for a minute. All right, you can all hear me now? Okay. I feel like I let the cat out of the bag several weeks ago when I said that I thought that all learning could be great. And of course, like everybody else, I've gone back and forth. I think our goal is eventually, of course, to have all the kids back in school and have life be back to normal. And I just, I, I hope I'm wrong that this virus is going to get worse before it gets better. I hope all those people who are arguing with me are right. I really do. But in the meantime, our goal is to get everybody back in school and we want them to do that. And we want, when they come back to school, we want everybody to be healthy. Our whole community, our kids, our staff and our families and our extended families. We want to have our full complement of staff ready to work and, and with us. And we want to have enough money to maintain that flexibility. So I think I'm with Annie. I think that we should start in an all remote and with a goal of getting back, you know, reasonably and safely when we can. And I think I have said from the beginning, I want to put, I would really love to put an emphasis. When we've got empty buildings, then that we also have flexibility with our billing, building use. So whether that's for some childcare or for some opportunities for kids to come in and visit and meet with our teachers from, for social, for social emotional learning opportunities. I think having the buildings not be full of kids is actually gives us a lot more flexibility right now. But I hate all of this and I hate all the choices. And I want all the parents to know that I totally empathize with them. I've gotten lots of letters on both sides of the issue and it's just really hard. We need to be here and supporting each other no matter what we're doing. So, does anybody else have anything else to add?
Sarah, can I just share one other thing?
Yeah.
Briefly, just something that, because in recent meetings, and we've had more, we have a bonus meeting tonight. There's been a lot more public comment at the beginning and we've noticed quite a few teachers and staff. And Sarah, you sort of just mentioned this a little bit, but that's something that we haven't talked a lot about tonight. And our teachers and staff are putting their trust in us to keep their considerations in mind as well. And they've, they've wanted to do this in a way that is not adversarial and is working as a team and moving forward. And I think that that's something that we have to consider, that, that having, what, 20 to 25% of the staff feeling uncomfortable enough to consider taking a leave. We have the opportunity to back our staff and then ask them to deliver. I mean, if we're asking them to deliver top notch instruction, we have to give them the opportunity and safe space to do it. And I think that's something we can't lose inside of this discussion. And that's another reason I'm in support of all of them.
Great.
Yeah, just to repeat what, based off what, what Teresa said, there is one thing that we can't afford to do is to lose people along the way. And that's why the safety part is so absolutely important for families, students and the rest. Because if it takes one chaotic disruption, there was somebody who was forwarding a good funny McSweeney's dot net thing about, what's your school survey? We can't lose people on the way. We can't have logistical chaos. This is going to have to be controlled on the way through. So, and I, yeah, everybody, it's a community, we'll keep it as a community. We know everybody's needs. We're not, whatever we come up with is not going to meet everybody's needs well. But the one thing we can do is stay together because the district and the, everybody involved has proven track record and has been pulling together.
Yeah.
Thanks. So much.
All right. So we have a motion on the table and it sounds like we're ready to take a vote. So we'll do a roll call vote in alphabetical order. So that means we start with Eric.
Do we have a second?
Sorry?
Yes.
A second on the motion?
Yeah, we already had a motion, second.
Can we repeat the motion just for clarity and Annie?
Sure.
So we have it all set up in time.
Annie, read it again, please.
What, Annie?
Class, everyone should learn to unmute yourself. Okay. I move that the Manchester Essex Regional School District adopt a remote K through 12 learning model, prioritizing and making available in-person opportunities for high and special needs students and others as recommended by the, and approved by the superintendent. The school committee will review data and assess the possibility of the hybrid and return to school models at the first school committee meeting of, of each subsequent month. And Gail, I can send that to you if it helps.
All right. So Annie made the motion, Teresa seconded it, Eric said yes, Annie made the motion, so she's a yes. Shannon? Whitman, yes. Matt?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes. Yes.
Teresa? Yes. Yep. And I'm, I'm a yes. So there you have it.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
We'll get to planning.
Can we talk a little bit about some things that we'd like to talk about in the next few weeks? I know that, you know, you have, but I think there's some things that, you know, we've talked about criteria for prior, you know, what are we, what brings us back to the building? And I'm assuming it would be that's kind of scaled approach in a model that the governor has presented. But I have some other things I'd like to talk about, Sarah, if we could.
Yeah.
So, you know, there is this issue of childcare and, you know, some people will say, well, that's not the district's responsibility. And I would say that this is an issue of equity for us. You know, you can have, I work with people who are, you know, one's a developer and one is a UX person. They need childcare. They cannot work and take care of their child. There are people who work in hospitals or wherever. So what are we going to do about those students and providing a safe place for them to learn with supports that, that parents who have the privilege of being home with their kids can provide? So I want to talk a little bit, not now, but talk about that in the future. I know that we've talked about remote can't look like it did in the spring. And I know that there were some directives or some circumstances that may have had, you know, created a situation that was not ideal. And I'd like to talk about like, what will remote look like? If, if we've, you know, there are a lot of ideas out there. So what do you guys think are the best practices that you're seeing? And finally, I'd ask that teachers start to thinking about managing their classrooms. Because I, I know that a lot of school committee members heard from people in the, in the community about unhappiness. And, you know, we always talk about that kind of hierarchy. You know, go to the teacher in, in the first circumstance. And I, I think what's really, what I would think about is, how do I manage this classroom? Even though it's not a room, it's a virtual classroom. How do I manage expectations? How do I set up communication with parents and, and the administration so that I can manage the concerns that parents have and students have in a way that is effective and quickly addresses some of the issues? Because, you know, we've made a very difficult decision tonight that is going to make some people very unhappy. And I want to make sure that people who, whose kids need help are getting the help that they need. And I don't want this to be a blame game or, you know, people spinning back and forth. I want to solve the problems and move on and have a robust remote program. Because we are the Manchester School District. We are an excellent school district. We have an excellent faculty that can deliver the best instructions. So I wanted, I want to fulfill the promise of what we've, what we've been working at for 20 years. So, and I know we can do it, but I want to, I want teachers to think about how to set their classrooms up in such a way that they can, can have the best experience for students. And so that's, those are the things I want to talk about because I am confident that we can do a great job.
A hundred percent. Thank you for saying all that, Annie. Anyone else want to weigh in with some last words? Kind of a late night?
I'll just offer, I feel like we're in a very good position because our hybrid model has much time and effort that went into designing it has had remote as its rounding principle throughout. So we are not starting, starting this work new tomorrow. We'll be able to now just shift some energy and focus on fully articulating that plan. I know folks have already been working on it since our meeting last week, having heard your comments and sensing where the decision may come this week. So we thank you for your support. This has been, this is difficult. It's going to continue to be difficult and we'll just continue to work together. So thank you.
One, I do have one request, Sarah and Pam. And we've made the decision, we've established a starting point. I guess I would ask for consideration for our next meeting if, or our next meeting, our first meeting in September, if there can be some sort of metrics or survey or feedback from the different stakeholders in the community. So we can move beyond because we now. beyond because we now have established a tension that may be stronger or whatever to pull us into the, how do we get to the hybrid? What are the groups that need the most? And I don't want to make this an exercise in metric. We have implementation to, but how can we get something somewhat objective to see where we stand and where we need to go next? So that's kind of a challenge on the table for everyone.
Not, not to, can I just ask for one point of clarification that will maybe help us come up with some, with some indicators or some benchmarks? So I think what I'm hearing in the decision, as we've laid out the plans, is a sense of what may, what will likely come from COVID and, you know, closures and quarantines, concern about the staffing and the, kind of the erratic potential of the schedule being up and down, and the hybrid seeming to be too costly, too much in doing neither side of it to its fullest potential. So are we looking for public health indicators to indicate safety to go back? And would they have to be in a way that, and we don't have to decide this tonight, but I guess as a group, we should be talking about what are those indicators? Are they public health guidelines? Are they program quality indicators? Like, when we can offer X in the building, this is when we should go back? Or is it purely, when it's safe to go back at three feet and we can put everybody in and let them intermingle, we should go back? So that's something to think about.
I guess, Pam, that's there, kind of, and I guess we would have had different metrics if we were hybrid, if we said, let's start in hybrid than if we started in remote. But you've heard, we've done a good job articulating what are the drawbacks of remote. So maybe a starting point is, is what are the drawbacks and benefits of remote versus hybrid? How are we addressing the drawbacks on an ongoing basis? Like we've talked about families and teachers, or just like families having a need for childcare. So how does, how are we doing on remote in terms of overcoming those obstacles?
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Yeah, just feel like I think it would be different metrics than, like, remote should be smoother, should be lower cost. Okay, that's great. You know, we, we're going to take for granted some of those are being delivered on. What about the ones we can't take for granted? So I hope that helps.
Okay.
Do you want more commentary on that? Or is that just something you want to put out there for future thought and discussion?
You have things to, you know, to throw on the table now. I'll take them. And if it's something you need to think over, that's, that's great, too. Well, I'm sure we'll revisit it.
My, my comment about that is, is looking toward, and I was thinking this when we were talking about it earlier, looking toward how do we deliver our program in person? And great. For me, this was a programmatic decision. It wasn't a health and safety decision quite so much. The state gave us the guidelines, and we adapted them to that six feet. So we know that technically, the safety, I had to sort of take that out of the equation in my decision. And so for moving from one format to another, I want to see how are we not starting back at where we are right now? How are we not decimating our program, again, to get people in the door?
Got it. That helps. Thank you.
If we've fried ourselves with talking about this for one night, perhaps a motion to adjourn from someone?
real quick, just before you do that. It's two seconds. I just want to say thank you to all of you on behalf of the staff, because I know this is tremendously lifted from them to be able to kind of have a little more, more of a focus and start planning. I know it wasn't an easy decision, as I demonstrated in my response. But we really appreciate the timeliness of it. So now we have, you know, five, five and a half weeks to get ready, and we're ready to go. So thank you all.
I want a second with John just said. Thank you.
Well, thank you both for being here tonight and for your presentation. That was really helpful. And I know everybody's just been working so hard ever since March, really, to put this together. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. So motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
And I know there's a couple kids like.
All in favor by roll call, please?
Yes.
Cameron, yes. Sorry, Erdman, yes.
Harrington, yes.
Warnock, yes.
Whitman, yes.
Both, yes. All right. That's a wrap. Thank you, everybody.